I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January 11th, 2021, and the time is 7:17 PM. Due to the health pandemic and extension of Governor Walz's Executive Order 20-10 COVID-19 Peacetime Emergency, this meeting is being conducted via video conference in accordance with Minnesota State Statute 13D.021. The district did make accommodations for public comment, which I will review when we get to that point of the meeting. This meeting is open to the public via live stream, and the recording of this meeting will be posted on the district website. Procedurally, we will conduct the meeting as follows. We will begin by taking board members attendance by roll call, and Anita will call the name of each board member in alphabetical order. When your name is called, respond by saying "present." Anita?
Broniak.
Hi.
Butler.
Present.
Gerwitz.
Present.
Gonzalez George.
Present.
Pritchard.
Present.
Quinell.
Present.
Stratmon.
Present.
Excellent, thank you. Also present at the video conference meeting are Anita Ozzy, Dr. Hillman's Administrative Assistant, Erin Bailey, Director of Community Education, Cheryl Hall, Director of Special Services, Val Murdisdorf, Director of Finance, and Dr. Hillman, our District Superintendent. Also, Sal Bagley and Caitlin Chambers from Wald Architects and Engineers, and Josh Cooper from Knutson Construction, Simon Tyler, Director of Prairie Creek Community School, along with Ben Miller, Prairie Creek Board Member, Keith Johnson, Prairie Creek Finance Director, and Kelsey Fitchen, Special Education Director for Prairie Creek, as well as Laura Steltner, Director of Arcadia Charter School. So that is our roster of those attending tonight's board meeting, and we do welcome those who are watching this board meeting via live stream. Board members are asked to mute their microphone when they are not speaking. At the start of each discussion as chair, I will call on each board member in alphabetical order by last name for any questions or comments. If you don't wish to speak, you are welcome to pass. I will conduct one round of questioning for board members. If board members have a follow-up question or comment, consider using the raised hand feature in order to be recognized by the chair. And just as item for information, we do not have any items for individual action tonight. So with that, we can move on to the table file. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, in the TV's table file, we had just a couple of items. We had an additional narrative for the Arcadia Charter School annual report, and there were just a handful of personnel items, including some increase, decrease, change in assignment, and a leave of absence.
Excellent, thank you. If there's no objections, we'll add these items to the addenda as we move forward. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion.
Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. Anita, we will do a roll call vote for approval of the agenda.
Broniak.
Aye.
Butler.
Aye.
Gerwitz.
Aye.
Gonzalez George.
Aye.
Pritchard.
Aye.
Quinell.
Aye.
Stratmon.
Aye.
Excellent, the agenda is approved. We'll move on now to public comment. This is an opportunity for residents, property and business owners, parents, employees, and students of the Northfield Public School District to address the board. This is a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate an issue. To accommodate the public comment portion of our meeting, we made available on the district's website the ability for the public to submit feedback to the board via email by 5:00 PM today. All submissions that follow the district policy regarding public comment will be read at this time. There were no submissions for public comment this evening. So we will move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, good evening. I have one announcement this evening, and I'm very proud to announce the Northfield High School winners of the Minnesota State High School Lead AAA Award. And the AAA Award is the Academics Arts and Athletic Award, commonly known as the AAA. It honors high school seniors throughout the state who have at least a 3.0 grade point average or higher and who participate in league-sponsored athletic and fine arts activities. And I'm incredibly proud to announce our winners, Annie Frank and Robbie Swenson. So Annie Frank and Robbie Swenson are your AAA winners for the 2020-2021 school year.
Excellent, thank you. Is there anything board members would like to add? Okay, we can move on now to discussion and reports. It is my pleasure to welcome Sal Bagley, Caitlin Chambers from Wald Architects and Engineers, and Josh Cooper from Knutson Construction. Welcome.
Thank you for that welcome greeting. It's so wonderful to see you all and to a couple of faces. It's wonderful to meet you all. We hope we get to meet you in person sometime soon. We are thrilled to come here and give you an update on all of the referendum projects. The last one of them is coming to a close. And I just wanted to call out that while Caitlin, Josh and I are here, we certainly have a much wider team back at our respective offices who had a lot to do with these projects. So the whole lot of us is proud to present to you what we have to share today. Next, please. Or do I have control? Thank you. Okay, so we are going to go over the project scope. The referendum that passed in November of 2018. We'll do a quick overview of the planning process that was used for each project and the timeline. And then we'll get right into the five referendum projects at Greenville, Bridgewater, Sibley, the NCEC formerly Greenville, and Longfellow. I do know that by keeping up with your board agendas, that you are undergoing potential name changes at Sibley and Longfellow. So that's the way we're referring to them in this presentation, but rest assured that that is something we're aware of. And then we'll open it up for Q and A. Next. So the referendum scope was a new elementary school, New Greenville Park Elementary School that serves grades K through 5 on the same site. Safety and security improvements and additions at Bridgewater Elementary School. Kitchen and cafeteria addition and media center renovations at Sibley. Renovation of the existing Greenville Elementary School to accommodate early childhood and other programming, now known as the NCEC. And to renovate the existing early childhood spaces at Longfellow to accommodate all district office functions. So for every project, we established what we called a core planning group, and they really helped us set the mission, vision, and philosophy of the project while the scope and budget were predetermined. So that was a representative group of each school community's stakeholders, whether that be parents, staff, leadership, administration, et cetera. And they helped us develop criteria and commitments for every project. So we really started every project with getting to understand the priorities and goals before we moved into developing diagrams. We did go on tours for many of those projects to go see similar projects around the state and the metro. And we spent a lot of time coming to consensus with that groups on what we're trying to achieve. Then we get into a rhythm with them of building a diagram, a floor plan diagram, and bringing back revised criterion commitments. And we go back and forth until we have a final schematic design that the committee recommended for bringing to the school board, which many of you saw those updates throughout the project. Next. After the work of the core planning group, we then meet with all impacted building stakeholders in a process that we call user groups. And so we zoom in on a particular building element. In this case, on the right-hand side, it's an example of a special education suite. And we talk about what cabinets should look like and where light switches should be, and where are marker boards, and how high off the ground are they, depending on the age level, and things like that, so that there are no surprises when staff move into their spaces. And we typically have to meet two to three times with every type of space user to get the details right. And so over the course of all the referendum projects, there were hundreds of these meetings, including for the furniture selections. High-level schedule, we'll go over detailed project schedules when we get to those slides. But the elementary school started design in January of 2019, and that opened fall of 2020. Bridgewater started in February 2019, and construction was largely complete in spring of 2020. Sibley had a relatively similar schedule, started in April and completed in the fall. The NCEC started design last fall in September, or September 2019, and completed in fall 2020. And last but not least, Longfellow is just now finishing up. So we will start with New Greenville. You'll see featured in this a variety of construction photos, computer-generated renderings, as well as our recently taken professional photography. So this is one of those photos. So I already covered this a little bit, but the scope was a new elementary school, and that also included new furniture throughout the building and some parking lot improvements to connect to the campus. The schedule, the core planning group met from January through March of 2019, and we had a couple of meetings there that got canceled by snow days. We had most of those user group meetings in the spring, March, and they went a little bit into April. And we turned over construction documents to Knutson for bidding in about midsummer, and we had our bid opening in August. And then construction started fall of 2019 to open fall of 2020. There's a more detailed floor plan on the next slide, but just as a color-coded version is a schematic diagram. So on the left-hand side, you can see the main level floor plan, and then on the right-hand side, you can see an upper level floor plan. By and large, all of the green spaces are classrooms. The red spaces are specialists. The coral spaces are student support services like special education. The gymnasium is in blue. The main office is in a goldenrod color. The cafeteria is can be seen in purple. And then all of the gray spaces are support spaces like mechanical rooms, electrical rooms, staircases, bathrooms, et cetera. So right when you walk in the main entry, the main office is adjacent to have a secure vestibule. And the building is secured in this way that the cafeteria and gym could be used after hours while securing the rest of the building. And if you take a right and go down the hallway towards the academic areas, the core planning group felt strongly about having grade-level communities. So you can see on the first floor, there's the kindergarten, first grade, and second grade learning communities, and upstairs are third, fourth, and fifth. There's some presence of specialists and student support services on both floors. Music on first floor and art above, and then a special education distributed on both floors. The media center is on the first floor with a couple flexible labs directly above it and overlooking it. And then the gymnasium has direct access out to green space. Next slide. This is an Axon diagram. So in this particular case, we took the second floor off, and we're just looking down into it. I've heard people jokingly call it a dollhouse view before. It just helps explain the space relationships a little bit. And this particular diagram was from our furniture selection processes. We did go through a full core planning group and user groups for every piece of furniture in the building. Next. So these are, next few slides are a series of comparisons. So in each of them, you can see a computer-generated rendering that was presented at a school board meeting in the bottom left. And then in this particular case, here's a picture from the middle of construction. So in this image, we are looking at the entrance to the media center. And there's an operable glass wall that allows for the book collection and some other assets to be secured after hours or when that's advantageous. And so you can see that in the closed position after just getting put in place in the construction phase. And then if we go one side forward, here's the final professional photo as compared to the rendering. And so these were taken not too long ago. And so you can see the operable glass wall is in its closed position there, or the panels are stacked away. The book collection is towards those windows, lots of natural daylight. And then we've got that flexible furniture out in the media center living room. A similar comparison in one of the classroom areas. So you can see the rendering on the bottom left. All of the classrooms are surrounding a flexible learning area for every grade level. And so then there's a door with a small amount of glass next to it, as well as what we call a borrowed light, a piece of glass that starts at about countertop height so that teachers can feel comfortable sending their students out to work in this space with passive supervision. So this is a photo from the middle of the construction process. And if we go forward one slide, we can see the final product with the final materials and selected furniture in place and a little bit of decorating from your teachers. Here, we can see the cafeteria under construction. So on the left-hand side, we've got, kind of just before they're ready to get the flooring material installed, a large amount of glass that you can see as you pull up to the building there. And then the server development is on the right-hand side there. Then the next photo is final. So on the right-hand side is a photo, and in the bottom left is a rendering of that same space. So that is the food service area where students get their meals. I just wanted to make a couple other points about Greenville while we were on it. So this project qualified for the Excel Energy Design Assistance, EDA, program. And so that's a free consulting program that Excel offers for any project over 20,000 square feet that's commercial in nature. And so what they do is customize energy modeling. They sit down with the design team and the school district multiple times over the course of design. And they can actually help predict if you made these design choices, you'd spend this much in energy and it would pay back in this many years. And so we were able to work on that with this project. And after selecting a bundle, you were projected to save approximately 72,000 a year in energy savings, which would have paid back in 6.8 years. But as built, it actually got confirmed at just under 86,000, which will pay back in about 6.1 years. And that represents about a 25% cost, energy cost savings over a typical code-built building, which is fabulous. All right, maybe next project, Bridgewater. So this is a photo of the new main office and secure entry addition. For those who maybe might not be aware, the addition kind of starts near where the cafeteria is with those windows on the left-hand side. And then the existing gymnasium wall, it's a little bit hard to see, it's the tallest volume in the back there. Those are parts of the existing building, and most of what you see in front of that is the addition. We covered up a little bit more. So the project was to create a new secure entry, which required us moving the main office to the secure entry. And then we renovated the existing administration suite into special education resource and support spaces. And that did include new furniture in that main office area. The core planning group met in February, and we did user groups in March of 2019 for a bid opening in May, and construction started in the summer and was complete in phases, but totally complete by spring of 2020. So that makes Bridgewater the first project to be completed from the referendum. So here is one of those Axon diagrams for Bridgewater. So the main office was formerly in the center of the building and in what's now labeled student support services. So that was the area that was renovated to create special education resource rooms and other spaces, while in addition was placed in the bottom, right, where you can see to move the main office and its core functions, as well as create a secure entry. Here's a couple photos and renderings. So this is from the, inside the vestibule, looking at the main office. And then the doors that are secured once school starts can be seen on the left-hand side. Here's a rendering in the bottom left in a photo from as-built condition in the main reception area, including the new furniture. So this is where visitors are greeted and screened before being allowed into the building. And then a couple photos from the renovation in the former main office, now special education resource area, construction, and then as completed. So you can see an example resource room, which on the whole were designed to support a couple staff members, small group space. And then in the main hallway, there are some breakout spaces as well for students. All right, now we'll move on to Sibley. Next. So the scope at Sibley was a new kitchen cafeteria, new art and music rooms, renovation of the existing kitchen cafeteria and media center to expand the media center. And then there is new furniture with all of those spaces associated. Their core planning group met in April and May of 2019, and we did user groups right before your teachers left for summer in May and June. The bid opening was in October, and construction started right away and opened about a year later in fall 2020. The renovation had to happen over the summer. Thank you. So here's again one of those Axon diagrams. So you can see the spaces that were impacted in Sibley. So for those who want to orient themselves, the main office is towards the bottom right in this image. The health office was modified slightly to better improve accessibility there and create some dedicated cot areas. Then the center of the building was renovated. That was where the former kitchen and cafeteria was and media center. And really to expand the media center and create a couple other assets like flexible classrooms, maker space, some conference rooms, et cetera. And then if we move towards the left, the large volume for context is the existing gym. An art and band room were added, along with the new kitchen, cafeteria, bus entrance, and building receiving area. Here's a couple photos from the construction process from midway through both of them. Both of these are in the addition area. And the cafeteria. And then here is a rendering in the bottom left that was shown at the school board presentation, as well as a final photo on the right of the kitchen and cafeteria. We're standing in the circulation zone in the photo. And the wood ceiling element really defines the cafeteria versus circulation. And if we kept going to the left, that would go out towards the bus area. And then here's a couple photos from the renovation of the media center. So most of this happened, or the bulk of it, happened over the summer. And rendering in the bottom left in a photo in the right of the final condition. The core planning group felt very strong about making the spaces accessible, including visually accessible from the rest of the school. So you can see many of the walls to the hallways and associated classrooms were opened up, and these sliding barn doors installed. There's a good photo, one of those. It's amazing what it does with that building. Next, we'll go over the improvements to the previously known as Greenville Elementary School, now the Northfield Community Education Center. So the project scope was renovations to accommodate the new programs, including early childhood and a few others. From a maintenance perspective, there was also a boiler replacement at that building, as well as the parking lot improvements. So the core planning group did most of their work last, in fall of 2019, and did user groups over the winter so that we could have a bid opening in February, and then construction was in April through September of 2020. And here is a diagram. So main entrance, you can see towards the bottom center of the slide if you are orienting yourself. So the building now supports many programs, one of which is Adult Basic Education or ABE. So if you can see at that main entrance, if you come in the vestibule, right to your right is the ABE spaces. So a couple classrooms and testing. There's the ability to secure most of the building so that students can be behind a lockdown line. Those there for early childhood or some other program get checked in through the main office, and then they are released into the parent lounge. And then the existing classrooms were renovated in various ways to support new programs such as hand-in-hand preschool, early ventures, some staff, early childhood family education, early childhood special education, and a couple other features. And the existing media center was renovated and improved to serve as an indoor play area. Next. So here's that indoor play area. So this is where all of the book stacks used to be when it was an elementary school. So there's some accommodation for carpet, as well as a hard surface area, and some definition created with some half-height walls. An example of a hand-in-hand preschool classroom. Thank you. And last but not least, the project that's just now finishing up, the renovations at the Longfellow Building for district office functions. So this is a rendering of the main welcoming area right inside the main entrance to the building. So the scope is to renovate existing spaces used by, or at that time, used by early childhood into district office spaces, as well as the creation of a new boardroom for the school board. The core planning group met in September and October of 2019. User groups were again in November and January, followed a very similar timetable to the NCEC project. The bid opening was in March. Construction started in August after the big move over to the NCEC, and it is just now getting ready to open. Final finish is being put on furniture installations, et cetera. So this is a floor plan or one of those Axon diagrams. This is technically of the main level of the building, which is the level that most of the district office functions will be on. So you can see the entrance is kind of again at the bottom center of this image with main office and reception just to the right of that. Directly ahead is a conference room and a couple other support spaces. And then there are some classrooms to the left that will be used for meeting, but the bulk of the renovation happened to be continued down the hallway to the right. So this was an area that had several preschool classrooms, and so it was completely renovated to support district office functions. You can see that there is a variety of private offices around the perimeter and workstations and conference spaces in the middle, making sure that everybody had access to natural daylight and that security was thought through. So a lot of conversations had about flow and function and how we greet visitors to the district office. We have labels on particular offices. You can see here, I probably won't go through all of them. And then there were a few other scope items on other parts of this building, not the least of which is a window replacement over a much part of the. Next. So here's a rendering from that office space. You can see we've got a couple private offices along the perimeter, some workstations, and then some collaborative meeting areas and accommodations for important file storage. The center of the district office space, so again, some storage along the wall there, some workstations in the center. And on the whole, we were able to plan to move the district office workstations over from their current location, just do some reconfiguring. And then last but not least, you all will get to meet there someday soon, the boardroom. So this is taken from, I think, maybe Chair Pritchard's spot on the board table. So it's a view of the space in the lower level that will be improved to be the boardroom. You can see the audience and some technology improvements, including a sound system. We do not have photos of that yet because they haven't quite finished, but coming soon. Maybe before I turn it over for Q and A, Josh, you want to, any construction topics? There was a lot to do in about 18 months there.
Sure. Thanks, thanks, Sal. I'll hit on a couple kind of highlights or wins. So it'll be probably a lot of numbers that maybe, maybe don't mean so much to everybody on this, on this meeting, but they're pretty important to us on the construction side. Sal hit on the schedule. I'll just hit, hit kind of the highlights. Bridgewater, five months, 15 days for the addition. Two months for basically the renovation, the interior work. The new elementary school, I think some of you have maybe heard this before, but 10 months and 25 days, which is pretty impressive from that first groundbreaking all the way to turnover. The Sibley was 10 months, as Sal had mentioned. Three months were strictly for that interior renovation. And the Community Education Center was three months and 22 days. And obviously, Longfellow wrapping up will be roughly around four months. Between the month, well, let's just call it April 1st to July 31st, the project put in nearly $16 million worth of construction. So almost half of the overall budget was placed in just four months. Quite impressive at hitting roughly $4 million a month. During peak construction, we called it June of this past summer, the construction sites of Sibley, New Greenville, and the community center were averaging right between 150 to 160 workers on site. So quite a, quite a mass of people. We were doing it safely. We were doing it as safely as we could through the pandemic. And, you know, I think one of the things that we're really proud of is we didn't, we didn't record an injury at all on the entire scope of work. So it was a very safe job. Our superintendents and our field staff were watching out for everybody on site. So it was a good, good highlight for the projects. The beginning of the project, you know, the district had a specific requirement to keep, to keep them involved and to keep the community informed and engaged. So we developed a communication plan way early on that I'm not sure if anybody has heard or seen or heard of it. But I think in our opinion, we did a pretty good job between Wald and Knutson on keeping, keeping you informed. We had contractor meet and greet. We had a groundbreaking ceremony. We did beam signing. We held a couple of community neighborhood meetings when we could, and we gave board updates, tours as best we could in person and virtual with some links that hopefully people were able to access during our construction, along with three webcams that were keeping track. You can still probably click on those and watch the progress through the time lapse. And then because we did weekly construction updates, and if I look back at that plan, I think the only thing that we really couldn't. That ribbon cutting. So maybe that'll, maybe that'll come up someday, but it's one thing that we just, we just missed on. So, you know, this construction team of Knutson is extremely proud of these projects. We're grateful that you chose us to be your construction managers. But, you know, we, we wouldn't have been a success without the help of the entire Wald team, specifically Sal and Sean and Matt and Kristen, Caitlin, and all the others. and Kristen, Caitlin and all the others that were keen making these projects go. So it was, it was a joint or a big team effort to make this, this thing a success. And again, if I don't have the opportunity after this meeting, I'd also like to put a special thanks out to Jim Colseth, Val Merzendorf and Dr. Hillman, and as well as all the principals too that were, were on the district side. I've worked with large or many great clients in almost 20 years of construction. And your staff within the district has been right at the top of the list. So, so thank you.
Wow. Great. Thank you so much. I mean, this is just incredibly exciting. We're just unfortunate that we have to do it via Zoom, but we certainly wanted to, to get this sort of project update completed so that we would have an opportunity to obviously express our incredible gratitude for your work. And when Josh, you say you think you did a pretty good job, I would say you did an exceptional job. And I would second that you have everyone, the entire team, including all of those wonderful people within the district that you mentioned, that just did an exceptional job and we do have lots to be proud of. So with that, I would like to open it up to board members for questions and comments. So I will go through the list. Tom, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, just glowing comment, compliments for job well done. I mean, I really liked the Greenville School and the fact that you juggled all those projects during the pandemic and everything else going on and the interruptions with no injuries is, is incredible. And you guys did a great job. One more to go. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Cory.
Thank you guys for your efforts. As a parent of two students at Greenville, they've loved being there for the first two months of the year and they're excited to get back in the coming weeks. So thank you for all your work on the building and the other buildings as well.
Thank you, Cory. Amy.
I have a comment in the question. The first is, the comment is that I was involved in several of the committees. And I was so impressed with the process that you led us through to come up with a vision for the various spaces. But on top of that, I'm even more impressed with how you took all of those comments and the general vision and pulled them together into a design and then took the design and actually made it into a physical space that encapsulated everything that we were discussing. To me, that is amazingly just impressive. So thank you all. Thank you, Sal and Josh and Caitlin and your teams. It was exciting to go through that process with you and to see how this works. So that's my comment. And my question is, I am so excited about these buildings now. I want to show them to the whole community. Now, obviously we can't do that just now, but I'm sure it's something that you all have been thinking about. And I wanted to get some insights as to how you think the best way of showing off these great construction and designs would be. How would you do it? Both Sal and Josh and Caitlin, what would you say?
Well, I would just want to thank you and other board members for your nice comments. We'll make sure to pass them to our team. And I can't thank all of the stakeholders of the district enough. I think between Josh's construction teams, our team and all of the stakeholders, we probably had over 500 people involved. So it's, it's been a team effort over the past couple of years. I would say that there's, we've been talking about at our monthly oversight committee meetings, manners in which to, to share this more widely with the community. We've talked about a few different things, whether that was pre-recorded videos or the 3D scans. So we've been talking about a couple, a couple of different ways in which we can safely share and celebrate. I don't know, Josh, if you have any other, anything else you want to add to that?
No, I think you're hitting it. You know, we've, we have scanned a few of the buildings that, that you can walk through virtually. But I think we, we still got a couple more brain sessions to hit on here in the next month to figure out the best way to communicate to the community, what we've done over the past 18 months.
Well, I'm thinking post pandemic and I'm thinking next fall, maybe whenever the time is right, when we can get back together in person. What would you like to do?
I think one of the, one of the most fun parts of a project is the ribbon cutting, right? And getting to see the faces on all the students as they walk in for the first time. And we didn't get to do that in a traditional sense this year, but I think a delayed ribbon cutting would be a nice. And we'd have plenty of time to plan for it. It's fun to share a lot of stats similar to what we talked about tonight and share a lot of photos. And so I still think an event like that could be meaningful for all projects. Sometimes I see people, if they do it after the fact, do a combined as well, celebrate all five referendum projects.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Claudia, any questions or comments?
No questions, just echo the praises. Absolutely beautiful work and well done doing it all without any reported injuries. Good job.
Thanks, Claudia. Jeff.
Yeah, great job. As a former student at the old Greenville, I'm, I'm kind of jealous that I don't get to go to the new ones. I have to leave it at that. But you know, outstanding performance, Sal and Josh and Wold and Knutson working together. And it's again, to echo the, the part of no injuries and to do all of this in the middle of a pandemic. So excellent job. Very impressed. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Noel, questions or comments?
Well, I may be on mute.
We can hear you, Noel.
You know.
Okay. I think new renovation were just educationally effective and I think timely and financially appropriate. And thank you so much for the work that you've done. Our community is proud of your work and really want to show it off.
Excellent. Thank you, Noel. Matt, did you have any comments?
You know me too well, Julie. Yes. So I just cannot say enough about the whole process. When I think back Julie, to when you and I presented this plan over 50 times to the community, that we passed the referendum with what I would consider in this day and age to be a landslide victory. Then we did exactly what we said we would. We brought tons of stakeholders, stakeholders to the table. I'm happy to hear that 500 number, Sal, because as I was trying to go through my head about how many people were involved, tons of people were involved down to where do we place, you know, I'm sitting, I'm actually sitting in my office at the new district office. And we, I remember talking about where we are going to actually place the light switch. That's the level of detail that users got to be part of. I think the message for the community is that we delivered. We told you what we are going to do. We involved the community as part of the project planning and we involved all of our staff as part of the project planning. And when you look at those renditions versus what the actual product is, we delivered. We did exactly what we said we were going to do and we're going to do it for about a million dollars or more, less than what we told the voters it was going to cost them. So the tax impact was less than what Julie and I told people in those 50 plus meetings. The work that we got from Wold and then the follow through and just the relentless pursuit of making sure it was done right by Josh and his team. To me, this, I've been involved, this is my fourth, fifth, fourth construction project in my career, not even close. And it's, it's not even in the same hemisphere how good this one was compared to previous ones. And I remember calling a fellow superintendent when it was clear that we were going to select Wold and Knutson and both said, best decision you'll ever make. And I think from a construction perspective, that is certainly the case. So we thank you for the work that you did to help deliver on what we promised the community. We did it on time for the most part and we did it for less than what we told the voters. That's how we build trust with the community and I just could not be more proud of all the people involved. And we cannot under emphasize the work that Jim Colseth and Val Merzendorf did to get us to the finish line. The day to day work that they did to make it happen, to make tough decisions based upon the conditions. Again, it's effective school management that I think the community can be proud of.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, Josh and Sal, it's, it's really bittersweet that we were able to have this amazing presentation tonight because it means that the projects for the most part are complete. We thank you for this amazing presentation, but thank you for your exceptional, truly exceptional work. And I, I thank board members for, for echoing all those sentiments. I mean, we are absolutely gleeful and, and really excited. We just wish we were in person, but maybe as Amy spoke, we will have an opportunity again to, to celebrate. So thank you and all the best to you in 2021, as I'm sure includes a very long list of future construction projects for very fortunate school districts like ourselves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the nice comments. It was great to see you and Cory and Claudia. It was great to meet you. Hopefully we get to meet you in person someday. And we hope you have a great rest of your first board meeting of the year.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on now to Prairie Creek Community School and Arcadia Charter School annual reports. We will begin with Simon Tyler, Director of Prairie Creek Community School. And as you recall from, from my announcement earlier, he is joined by Ben Miller, School Board Chair, and two others from his staff, Keith Johnson in Finance and Kelly Pitchen, Special Education. So welcome to all the Prairie Creek and to of course Laura, when we will get to the director or to the Arcadia presentation. So welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here. Good evening, Dr. Hillman and board. Congratulations, new board members. It's nice to meet you as well. I'm going to give a brief annual report overview. And then Dr. Hillman, I'm just checking that follow that, following that, I have an introduction to the contract renewal application. I have, I have a brief overview of that as well, if this is the appropriate time.
Yeah, that would be the appropriate time, Simon, but I don't have a slide deck for that. I think you're just going to review the overall document that was in the packet, correct?
Yes, I won't make everyone read the overall document. I'll just give a supporting statement and take questions.
Good. We, because of the way the application process, we could be here until Thursday to go through that one.
Right. Exactly. Well.
Thank you, Simon. That sounds great.
Okay, wonderful. So, so in your packet, you have a one-page summary of 2019, 20 annual report and also this very brief slideshow. And I'll just highlight a few pieces from that report. Just introduce myself. I'm the Director at Prairie Creek Community School. This is my 10th year of the school as Director and we have a longstanding relationship with this board and our authorizing district. The comprehensive annual report, which has been shared, is also on our website, has all the supporting data and detail for a few overviews that I'll give you. And then we could take some questions on that year of 1920 before I go on to the renewal. So if you could go to the next slide, Matt, unless I have autonomy to do that. Okay, wonderful. So this slide just gives you a brief overview and reminder of our mission. Our mission has remained unchanged now since 1983, when the school was founded. We are a community school, we're a child-centered school, a progressive education school, and Prairie Creek aims to make the world a better place. In 1920, some highlights that aligned with that mission work, with a strong strategic action focus on educating for equity. Our staff participated in a progressive education network conference in the Twin Cities. Board members participated too. It was a learning process for us. We heard some great speakers such as Dr. Bettina Love. And that conference was followed up with a book club with staff focusing on her work. That work on equity, equity focus has flowed into our strategic plans that this year, just sort of jumping forward into future plans a little bit. We have a district advisory committee and now subcommittee examining the language under our mission statement of aiming to make the world a better place with a little more modern equity lens informed by training we've done. Training included, alliance training and cultural competency for all our staff this fall. And also our board members participated in a training as well. So we're very focused on that work movement. I'll also talk just a little bit about outdoor learning. Outdoor learning has always been a strong mission emphasis at Prairie Creek. We're blessed with some wonderful outdoor spaces for our children to learn in. With a pandemic, it actually became an opportunity, excuse me if my internet connection is a little unstable. Folks, you might have missed that. Yes, with a pandemic this fall, we took the opportunity to sort of double down on our outdoor learning measure and create additional spaces outside for our children to learn in some, also erected a more permanent pavilion. So that will continue to be a focus going forward. Academically, in 1920, a couple of initiatives we had was a staff professional development around basic fact fluency to support our math programming. And one of the outcomes of that work, and again, in support of the unusual year, and we did adopt a new math curriculum over this, it's called ZER. And it's both that basic fact fluency piece, but also a resource for students and families in the remote learning setting. Our residency has continued and it seems hard to believe, but this time a year ago, we were engaged in an opera residency with St. Olaf faculty and students. And that was certainly a highlight, which we're enjoying reliving right now and hope to do again in the future. So there's a handful of program highlights. Next slide, please. Of course, we're a public progressive school and accountability is a big part of what we are attentive to. And I like to share with your board to show you that we are an effective public school as well as a progressive school. This chart gives just an overview of the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Scores for our school over the period of this latest contract. Of course, there is no data for 2020 as MCA's were not administered due to the pandemic. The bullet points on the side really just emphasize that as well as that state level accountability, we do bring an innovative lens to how we know children, how we evaluate children. And there's a short list there of things we focused on, formative assessments, performance observation, so on and so forth. Our teachers are currently in the process of writing narratives. I think the narrative is looking a little different this year. They reflect the fact that we've been in an unusual year. But in conferences in a couple of weeks' time, our teachers will be sharing written narratives with parents in virtual conferences, keeping that piece of evaluation going. Next slide, please. Very briefly, this chart gives you an overview of our financial management. The line graph shows our fund balance over the period of this last contractual period. You can see that it's been very stable in 2020, fund balance finished out at 33.2%. Very consistent with prior years. We stay focused on this conservative budgeting with the support of a teacher-involved finance committee. We have a good fortune and are very attentive to maintaining full enrollment in a waitlist so we can budget effectively off those numbers. We do five-year forecasting and have an effective fundraising development program. This all enables us to maintain a strong fund balance and withstand the rigors of difficult years such as the one we're in now. Next slide. Yeah. And with that, I will take questions.
Okay. Thank you, Simon. We'll take questions on the annual report. And then as Simon indicated, he's going to review the, the authorization report that was also part of the packet. So board members, Tom, questions or comments for Simon?
Yeah, Simon, it's always great to hear from you and hear about Prairie Creek. Yeah. So two comments. One, I like that Prairie Creek collaborates with and shares ideas with the elementary teachers in town and everybody works together and no, you're not separate from, from anybody. And then I was also quite impressed that the science jumped considerably in 2019. Do you have any ideas or thoughts of how that happened?
Yeah, Tom, I think I've spoken before at board meetings around this. And I always like to have a lot of caution about standardized test data either way, where a small cell size and those science scores represent just our smaller 35th graders. Of course, we're pleased with the results. We have a strong emphasis. Of course, we're pleased with the results. We have a strong emphasis on science at our school. We have a thematic, integrated approach to learning science. So the science is embedded in so much of what the children do through the thematic study classrooms are always involved in. So really, science is just part of what we breathe at Prairie Creek. Kindergarten through fifth grade, it's informed by personal projects, which are intrinsically motivated choices for children to engage in. And they share their learning with others. So children are learning not just from the teachers, from the science curriculum, but also from their peers. And this is one of the MCA's that I think is certainly one of the MCA's that I feel feel better about in that they present sort of scenario-based questions for the children. And I think our kids enjoy sort of tackling the puzzles that are entered in that assessment. So again, I note a caution that this is a small sample size, and that data might go up and down in future years. But but yes, those are a few factors that probably inform those results.
Great, thank you.
Cory, questions or comments for Simon?
Thank you, Director Tyler, for the great presentation. I do not have any questions.
Excellent. Thank you. Amy, questions or comments?
Hi, Simon. Always good to see you. My question is, how did the pandemic affect Prairie Creek? Both financially and just generally, do you have any story you can tell from the pandemic?
Yeah, financially, I think with the and because he's on the call, but also it's because of what he does with the outstanding support of our financial officer, Keith Johnson. I think we've we've had a resiliency to the pandemic that has been hard for a lot of other small schools. We had we had the good fortune of full enrollment and a waitlist. So with the pupil funding, that's a key factor for a small school, and we were able to stay fully enrolled. So that's given us the confidence to make staff and expended decisions. We did use the additional funds that were provided for school support, but a lot of technology additions. You know, we updated our technology. We needed to purchase a lot of devices to support equity work. And then we did some innovative pieces like purchasing tents for the outside. A positive piece for us, I think our teachers would say would be teaming. We made a decision very early on last spring that we would get through the sort of the barriers of this situation through teamwork. So we're organized by three developmental teams, and we've been much more in lockstep in curriculum planning than we maybe would be in a typical year when teachers have a little more autonomy within their own classroom. And I think frankly, that was a good decision so we could support each other through this. And then the outdoor learning piece. We, you know, we admitted to being outside in the fall. It's something we certainly want to do as we plan for in-person return. When the winter months definitely we moved to the spring, we do hope that outdoor learning will be another key piece which helps both for health but also mental, emotional well-being of our children and our staff.
And one more question. I know many schools are worried about an educational backslide with their students' learning. Is that something that you have a concern with for Prairie Creek students, or do you feel you're able to keep them moving forward?
Yeah, I think, you know, the honest response to that, Amy, is we're like every other school that we do have a concern about that, of course. I think one of the challenging areas that we in all schools are facing is we normally know our children so well academically, in part because we're able to do those formative assessments within the classroom throughout the year. That's certainly a challenge remotely. We've tackled that in a few ways. You know, we've brought an equity lens by making some staffing decisions to support our most at-risk students academically. We developed a literacy intervention initiative, moved into distance learning at Thanksgiving. So with our full data, we were able to look at those students who didn't qualify for special education, but we had concerns at the teacher level about as far as literacy goes and provided some additional remote support there. We're excited for the children to return, so we have an opportunity to do that winter band of assessments that we can do in the classroom. They're a little harder to do remotely. And this will inform part of our winter conferences in a couple of weeks. I think in a way, these winter conferences, which are often so much progress, become sort of goal-setting. Not just how do we academically reintroduce students, but how do we socially, emotionally reintroduce them? Yes, I'm worried about the academics, but if anything, I have been more concerned about the social, emotional, mental well-being of our children. And that's where we're going to place a lot of our focus in these first weeks back, while of course assessing academic needs and responding to that too.
Are you bringing back the kindergarteners through second graders first and then? Okay, just like everyone else. Thank you.
We're on the same timeline as Northfield for a return. Only difference is that we're bringing K through three back first. Because we're a multi-age school, we had an accommodation that second and third graders could be treated as one-grade band under the governor's orders, so not to create an awkward split there for two weeks. We're actually K three, and then our fourth and fifth graders will return on February 1st. So essentially the same timeline as the Northfield District Elementarys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great questions. Thank you, Amy. Claudia, questions or comments?
Hi, Simon. Good to meet you. Great presentation. I hear lots of great things from the community members that that I know who have children at the at the school there. So I know it's a terrific program. I have just a simple question. What kind of devices did you do your students use? I know we have iPads at home here. What what devices do your students use?
Yeah, we use iPads primarily for our youngest children and then Chromebooks mostly second through fifth grade.
And did you have issues with families who didn't have internet access?
Yeah, yeah. Initially, that was a big part of our work in the spring is sort of assessing that need and then responding to it. And that involved a couple of things for us, a pretty significant expenditure on devices first, because we were not a one-to-one technology school. And although we'd built up a decent bank, we really had to invest a lot in anticipation of what we would need going forward. And then we, family by family, really assessed the internet needs. We have provided some hotspot support. And I would just want to give a shout out here to some of the organizations in town who've helped us as well as as the other schools. Northfield Promise had an initiative there that has been very helpful recently in providing internet support for families. So we now know every family is connected and every family is engaging with us as they need to in distance learning.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Jeff, questions or comments?
Yeah, Simon, thanks for your report. I look forward to, and I'm sure you do too, late winter here and early spring, getting in the classroom and getting some community going and some of those good relationships with the parents and students in person. So I just look forward to that, and I'm sure you do too. And I think that I was going to ask, what what do you think, you know, is the hardest thing about being separated from students that you're kind of seeing and hearing from them? And then, you know, how much can I I'm looking forward to a big anticipation of just kids getting back together and being able to see their friends.
Yeah, I love that question, Jeff. And I think that's it for us. I think it's very fundamental. I mean, we're we're a relational school. When we say we're child-centered, it means a lot of things. But frankly, we just enjoy being around kids and seeing kids with each other. And I do believe our staff has done an exceptional job with their remote piece as well as they could do it. But I think to a person, we just miss being with kids. We miss the joy that brings. We need this. We miss the spontaneous emergence of learning that can happen when you have the energy of a group of children with a skilled educator. And so we're just very excited to sort of hear their voices, you know, hear the laughter and that sort of hustle and bustle of kids around the place. We know it'll be a little different. We'll have a lot of health protocols to follow. We'll be we'll be partying, but nonetheless, we'll be with kids, and that excites us.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. Noel, questions or comments?
Good report. Thank you. And it's very timely. And I think it's this community is blessed to have a another to have Prairie Creek as an option, educational option in our district. Good report and good work.
Thanks, Noel.
Excellent. Thank you, Simon. And thanks, board members, for for really highlighting what we know is the strength of progressive education. You know, active learning environments, individual projects and thematic studies. And we we know we can hear your the excitement in your voice, and we know that's echoed by your staff because we've been fortunate to meet staff over the years as you've brought them to our board meetings. So we, of course, wish an early and warm spring, right? So you can be outside. So I know you want to segue now and discuss the charter school renewal application, so we can do that and then open that up for questions from board members as well.
Right. So I shared in your packet a fairly lengthy document. So I will share you the pain of reviewing the whole thing page by page. And I just prepared a sort of statement of support and overview. And then we have Ben and Kelsey and Keith here, should you have questions. So this is just a supporting statement. And and I would like to begin by acknowledging all the work and support that Dr. Hillman has provided for the renewal process. Frank frankly, it's amazing to me that even as he leads the Northfield District through this most exceptional of years, he still always has the time and care to answer questions that we've had about the role of the authorizer in this application. So thank you, Dr. Hillman. A brief summary of the process we engaged in in order to prepare this contract renewal for you. As we've entered this, our last year of this current contract, PCCS Board Chair Ben Miller and myself met with Dr. Hillman to charter a schedule for this application process. So we've really been working on this over a period of months. We followed the same processes we did five years ago and centered it on four critical questions. Is the education program a success? Is the organization effective and well-run? Is the school meeting its legal obligations? And are strategies in place for sustaining success and continuing to improve over the next charter term? During the fall, we engaged in a self-study, which was conducted with input from board members and our school leadership team. And the self-study was organized around these four critical questions. And then we shared this self-study with our school board at Prairie Creek at this meeting. Prairie Creek is a teacher-powered school, and I'm very grateful to the leadership of teachers. I'm grateful to our school and also Keith Johnson and our special education corps, Kelsey Fitchin, for their input and the data and review we prepared for this document. And Ben, Kelsey, and Keith are all here. Should you have questions on governance, special education, or finance that I can't answer? The self-study encompassed a review of all the annual reports from the contractual period, reports you've heard over the last few years, as well as special education reviews and reports from Mary Grace Hansen, who accompanied Dr. Hillman on annual site visits. So those are in the attachments of the document I shared with you. It's difficult to capture the story of five years of what a school does in a 20-page document. But so I really have appreciated these annual opportunities to have this human interaction with you about our work and field your questions. And I would say that the document is supported by the knowledge that Dr. Hillman and his team have been constant collaborators and closely attentive to our work with their visits and questions and support. I feel confident they know who we are and how we are accountable to state and federal measures. The Northfield Public School District, our authorizer, has been engaged and supportive partner for several contractual periods now going back to 2002, when we first became a public charter school. We are now one of the few charter schools that has an enduring relationship with a local district. This is something I'm immensely proud of, and I will contend that a positive public school choice opportunity and the small school innovation contributes to sustaining Northfield as a dynamic educational community we all know it to be. We're grateful for your support. In turn, we enjoy sharing back innovations and ideas with our educator colleagues. I think we, to conclude, we don't really know the true measure of a relationship until it's tested by the most challenging of outside circumstances. Then we discover what our trust, support, and resources really are. And the pandemic, of course, has provided that test. You, the authorizers, passed it with flying colors. You've remained open, helpful, supportive of our work. And I know I speak for our board and staff in sharing this application when I express my sincere gratitude to Dr. Hillman and his leadership team for their unfailing support for us through every moment of this difficult journey we've been on. So I thank you for taking the time to read and consider this application renewal. And welcome any questions you've got for myself, Kelsey, Ben, or Keith.
Excellent. Thank you, Simon. Okay, I will ask board members if they have any questions as it relates to the charter Prairie Creek Charter School renewal application.
No questions, and I'll just echo back what you, the glowing compliments you give to the Northfield Schools, right back at you. You guys at Prairie Creek are top-notch. You're thorough report. You know what your your mission is, and you're focused and you do a great job. So as a board member, I think the what we our relationship we have with you is great. And I'm I think just think it's great.
Thanks, Tom. Cory, questions or comments?
Yeah, just to echo what others have said before. I really appreciate the relationship we've had. I know my interaction with you, Simon, in the school over the years, it's been wonderful. And for those who I know who participate in the school as parents and students, it's been a huge benefit to them and their families, and it's a huge contribution to the larger education community. So I look forward to continuing the relationship and supporting your mission.
Thank you, Cory.
Amy?
Yes, as a former and forever Prairie Creek family, I was very interested to read through all of this. And I see that the school keeps getting better and better, and it was great when we were part of it. And I love to see all your improvements as time goes on. And my comment is neither here nor there, but I found it very interesting that of your small teaching staff, you had three Amys, an Amanda, and an Amber. Not at all confusing there, but I just thought that was interesting. And also, I just wanted to thank you for providing another option, another another school option for our children in around here. I think Prairie Creek does a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy.
Claudia, questions or comments?
No questions, just echo the compliments and just congratulations on having a great relationship and bringing an excellent alternative to our community.
Jeff?
Yeah, I was just maybe looking for a comment from Matt. I mean, I remember a while back, I mean, with Northfield, we have sponsoring two charter schools, and I remember how extremely difficult it was, even with Chris Richardson, you know, way back when, how to get any charter schools through. Has that process gotten easier? And are there a lot of charter schools in Minnesota now, for more or less?
Yeah, so I would say that the state has had a lot of growth opportunity in how it manages the charter schools throughout the state. We are now one of, in fact, when this started, you know, a couple of decades ago, many public schools were still were charter school sponsors. That was the old term. We're down to two public school districts in the state who remain as charter school authorizers. It is us and Susago Lakes Public Schools. The rest of the state's charter schools, which I would characterize as growing, are authorized by what they call single-purpose authorizers. So this is an organization that their sole duty is to authorize charter schools. And we have a chance to meet with them on a monthly basis, very focused on a variety of different approaches to education. Some very much like what we see with Prairie Creek, and what I would say is the original intent of the charter law in Minnesota, that progressive, lab-oriented kind of education. But based upon the state and the needs that the communities have, depending on where those charter schools plant themselves. schools plant themselves, for as many charter schools, there's probably as many different needs as there are. Now, I think that the state has gotten much better about how it manages authorizers. We are working through a corrective action plan to recertify ourselves as an authorizer. It's a robust process. We're very confident we're going to finish that by the end of February. But Jeff, I would say that the oversight is improved, and I would say that it is challenging, and it's a robust process.
Yeah, well, well, very diplomatically stated. And I know that that's a lot of work. So hang in there.
Thank you, Jeff. Noel, questions or comments?
Simon, good report. Thank you much. And keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you. Simon, I just had a couple of questions. I appreciate giving the renewal application. And of course, it was really interesting to read the report that Dr. Hillman and Mary Grace Hansen submitted from their visit in December of 2019. So with Kelsey on the line, I did want to, or at the meeting, I did want to ask, there one area that was highlighted for a review and just some some more work regarding the transition of Prairie Creek's special education students to the Northfield Middle School. And just wondered if you had had some areas there that you'd want to highlight where you had done some work along what was viewed as an opportunity?
Yeah, thank you. We, I think that's always a growth area, making sure we're able to transition our kiddos smoothly. So we try, I often try to come, working with the fourth and fifth graders, I try to come to support that transition and meet with teachers. That was a little bit, we we were able to Zoom this spring. It was a little bit more challenging, I think, than than typical. But I think working to just make sure that both teachers in the district, as well as families and the students feel supported, is is what we're continuing to work towards. So I think we've made vast improvements. When when I first came in, there was very little transition, and I feel like the communication is vastly improved. But always, always room for growth and improvement.
Excellent. Thank you, Kelsey. So Simon, what is your your renewal application process? I mean, certainly, when you read the report, it's, you know, they're they're really, I mean, certainly, if it were me looking at it, and of course, I'm biased, but wouldn't see any issue here. So so what is the process for you? I know Dr. Hillman just highlighted what we are looking at in terms of our authorization status. But for you, what does this entail? And what what steps are you needing to proceed as you go forward here?
Yeah. And Dr. Hillman, correct me if I get anything wrong on the timeline here, but I believe the next phase would be for your board to make a determination, not at this meeting, but a future one of if you're accepting the application. And then our board would go through a similar process. And then, Dr. Hillman, I believe, prior to June 1st, we would need to actually establish the contract, which is a pretty weighty document. And I would collaborate with Dr. Hillman on the contractual goals, you know, many of which are referenced in this report I've given to you from the last five years. There's certain accountability goals which we need to be attentive to for the authorizer practice and oversight. And also, we have some conversation around, you know, what are the some more sort of Prairie Creek mission pieces that are sensible to live in that as well. So it's a real opportunity for us to look forward, see opportunities for improvement, name those in the contract, and also align it to what for us will be our next strategic planning cycle. So, Dr. Hillman, did I misstep on any of the timeline pieces there?
Of course not, Simon. You're, and in fact, what we will be doing is we normally, as you've seen by this time in a normal year, we would have already completed our site visit. We've been trying to wait as long as we can so that we can could try to do something, maybe in person, not convinced of that yet, but we need to replicate that site process where we'll follow up like we normally do. And it's even just a little more robust in the year that we are asked taking the application for another contract. Our goal would be to get this wrapped up with a new contract, I would say, by April for sure, so that we can get all of those things completed for the state, get it submitted, so that there's no gap in the contract for Prairie Creek. So I do believe this is, as we know, this is not Simon or Ben's first rodeo. And I know Kelsey has been sort of supporting the process for a long time. So we feel we're on the right track. We plan to finalize our site visit, start to work on the application process to have the board finalize the contract, our board finalize the contract somewhere sometime in April, and the same thing for Prairie Creek.
Excellent. Thank you. Simon, thank you. And I want to acknowledge Ben Miller and your finance jash, oh, I lost his name, I apologize. Keith Johnson, who, I mean, incredible fund balances. We know that's a huge challenge, and we appreciate the financial stewardship that obviously your board and your staff and for sure, your finance officer are committed to. And so it's just really great. And I will echo this with Laura as well. You know, I think that Northfield and particularly Dr. Hillman and the your your work as the directors of our charter school and the relationship that we've built is really a model for charter schools and school districts working together nationwide. So it's always just really great. And I echo board members. I'm proud that as a board, we are very supportive of our of our community's charter schools, and we know that it is choice that is really valuable for our parents. So we look forward to the process moving forward as we as we look for the charter school renewal application. And I believe, Dr. Hillman, five years is the maximum we can get, correct? They have not adjusted that at the state level? Okay, that's unfortunate. But well, five years, it used to be three, correct?
Since I've been doing it, it's been a five-year process.
Okay, all right, excellent. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you, Simon, and those who are joined on the meeting tonight from from your from your school. We'll move on now to Arcadia Charter School, and we welcome Laura Steltler to do that presentation. Welcome, Laura.
Thank you. Hello. Great. Thank you. Okay. So in my five slides, I am working here to sort of present an an overview. It's been, so I've been the director at Arcadia just for a year and a half, and it has been a very eventful year and a half. So I've learned a lot, and I am very grateful for the support of the Northfield School District and also of Simon at Prairie Creek in helping me through some of the challenges that we've faced here in the last year. So, all right, so I included our sort of our audited budget or the actual amounts from our finances last year. So yep, that's the one. And so in the blue box is the actual amounts. And so we went into the year. And in September, my first year, I was told, well, we're anticipating a $65,000 shortfall. And I, and so we we made a fair amount of adjustment to the budget and we got that down to, in the end, 6,218 from the budget was excess expenditures. And then that 3,320, I keep trying to circle it with my cursor, but it's not my screen that I'm sharing. And that is for the lunch fund. So that was for meals. So in the end, our net change was nine, negative 9,538. And so our fund balance went from 270,042 down to 260,504. And but actually, that was okay. And compared to what we were anticipating, and that was based on declining enrollment. So and we had four students who were enrolled in post-secondary enrollment option, which impacts the funding that we receive. And then we had, when the pandemic hit, we had a couple of students who decided to homeschool, and actually, three. And then we had a couple of students who decided to go to Connections Academy or another fully online school. And so that was difficult. But because we have such, you know, with a maximum of 126, our ADM ended up at 107 point, let me think, 107.58. And we had originally budgeted for, I think it was at 118. So it was a difficult year, but actually, our cash flow, cash flow has remained fine, like we've been doing overall quite well financially, and even with our dropping enrollment. So for this year, we budgeted at 108, and we should be, right now, we're on target to contribute a small but small amount to our fund balance instead of going backward in that. The board does have a policy to build that fund balance. We're currently at 13.3%. Previously, last year, we were at 13.8%. So they are working toward that and also recognize that this is a very difficult year for that. So let's see, next slide. So I wanted to talk about student achievements. Since we didn't have MCA data, and I'm focusing on the goals from our World's Best Workforce Report that were not based on MCA data. And then one of those is all of our students, all of our eighth grade and senior students, complete a project, a senior project, or an eighth-grade honors project. And it is a substantial a substantial learning experience. So this is one of our seniors, Eli. And he learned how to weld and from his dad. He spent a lot of time practicing, and he learned a lot of different, so his his dad is an engineer, so he worked with him. And so in the end, all of that practice, he actually built a new sign for the front of the building out of steel. So it's extremely heavy. And he created that tree sculpture that you see at the top. And in the middle of this slide, that logo is a new logo, and Eli was part of the team that developed that logo with a local designer. And so all of our students, we have a 100% graduation rate for the last few years. And each of them completed a senior project that was substantial and meaningful to them. And so for Eli, he is heading to art school next year, or this year, really. And so this was excellent preparation for him for sculpture and design. Want to go to the next slide? So this year has really been mostly about engaging students. How do we keep students coming back every day? And we have really excellent attendance. And even last spring, when we shifted to distance learning, and the first week, for example, we had 100% attendance, which we were really proud of. And our attendance continues to be really strong this year. So one of the things that we thought about when we were in the hybrid model in the fall was how do we still do some of the things, you know, that are unique, that are exciting? But we do them outside so that we can distance and have a slightly safer context. So we had a number of field trips. The two that are here, we had a group that went to the Extreme Sandbox. One of our seniors is doing a project on women in construction. And so she was interested in doing this. We received a donation to take students to the Extreme Sandbox where they could then work, use actual construction equipment, try it out. So they got to drive an excavator and a bulldozer. And then the field trip to Normandale's Japanese Garden. So we have a Japanese language class. And so that group of students went to that garden. Let's see, I think this was in October or November, early November, so before we moved to distance learning. But on an everyday basis, we're really striving to find ways to help students feel like the relationships that we worked so hard to build are being maintained. So actually, if you go to the next slide, on the right, there we have one of our classes is called Not Study Hall. The its informal name is Not Study Hall. And it's a class that is specifically designed to get students outside, active, just playing in the woods. So that's another, so we tried to add some things to the curriculum that would be engaging and in a space that was safer. And we tried to do more, we did mountain biking one week, we did an outdoor movie night. And so we tried to find ways to do activities that would continue to build our community and our sense of togetherness, while all of our classes are actually meeting online every day. So even in the hybrid, our teachers are teaching online. And students are they have a support person in the room, but not the teacher. And so so we were really working to build connections. One of the other things that I talked about in the narrative, so Arcadia is really working right now to sort of go back to its mission and to really embrace our our mission is really a very progressive mission. And so embracing our identity as a progressive school is part of what we're working on. So we're actually in the middle of building a rubric that we can use to measure our progress toward our mission. And so the board is working with, we have, we looped in the district advisory committee, board members, and then any interested parties, students or parents, families, who wanted to be a part of the conversation to build that. And then we're going to start talking more about and looking at the ways that we already do a lot of those things in the way that we approach education, and then also how we will build on that in the future to prepare our students to transition intellectually, emotionally, and ethically to higher education, future employment, and engaged citizenship. So.
Excellent. Thank you, Laura. Appreciate the report. And I will take now the opportunity for board members to ask questions and comments. Tom?
Thank you, Laura. Good to see you again. I'm on the Cannon Valley Maker. So good that you're you're interacting with, taking advantage of things in the community. Did you have any issues going online, technology or whatever, and do your students use devices?
We really didn't. I had the advantage of having taught online. So I taught in a blended model. We really didn't. I had the advantage of having taught online. So I taught in a blended model for ten years, and I think that really helped. And so I was able to troubleshoot a lot with families and with teachers. Um, so actually, we, it was a really smooth transition, which was kind of a surprise. And but we had actually started asking, um, in early February about internet access, because, um, we had, one of our parents was also a nurse at the U of M, and she said, you know, the U of M is talking about the potential of closing. So just in case, think about the possibility. And at the time, we were thinking like for a week. So we had said, okay, well, we don't, we're not a one-to-one school. Um, so we started sort of planning out, okay, how would we get devices to students? And do, does everybody have internet access? Can we help everybody get internet access? Um, so it was a smooth, it was a very smooth transition, actually. I can't complain.
Um, good. Um, and could you just talk maybe a little bit about how your school is organized, like class sizes, or do you have classes? Do you all? Um, is it just big open area? Do you, do you work together?
Sure. So, um, it was, it started out as an EdVision school. So EdVisions had this model where everybody was in the same space, just doing projects. Every student got to choose everything for themselves all of the time. It's very difficult to stay in that model. So I only, of the schools who are in that model, I don't know of many, I think maybe one, that stuck really strongly to that project-only, every student chooses everything model. Uh, most started offering seminars, and Arcadia was one of those schools that started offering seminars. And then for Arcadia, that evolved into classes. So we essentially developed sort of two tracks. We've got all of our classes, all of our core classes. And then we have the project piece that, um, every student completes every quarter or every year. Um, projects of their choosing with input from, um, their advisors. And right now, one of the things that we're really working on is project-based classes. So not seeing class and projects as mutually exclusive, but really embedding project-based learning in everything that we do. And so right now, we do have, you know, a sixth-period day, and students move between formal class and project work time. And we do have, for the middle school, for example, they have first period, they have, um, everybody, the whole middle school has a project work time period. Uh, right now, they're working on problem solving, is sort of the theme, and then they work, sorry, my dog decided to sit by me while I was in the chair. The, um, so then later in the day, each grade level has a project work time as well. So the middle school is a little bit more grade-focused. At the high school level, things are pretty multi-aged, so any student can take any of the classes, any of the electives. And and they can actually, they don't always do this, but they can actually choose to do more through projects and less through classes. So at the high school level, they could opt to take, um, take a civics credit, but then do government as a project and do something independently that's of interest to them, that answers questions that are, um, uniquely interesting to, um, to their perspective. So and it's, we have, we just finished an addition last year. Um, we added two additional classrooms, so we now have six classrooms in addition to four large advisory spaces. And then we have, uh, the great room, which is sort of our central gathering space. And that's sort of, so we move among those spaces fairly fluidly.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Lori, questions or comments?
Laura, thanks for being here tonight. A couple of questions. You referenced the reduction of five ADM from the prior fiscal year, school year. And it's pretty flat this year. Do you have any anticipation with the number might be next year? And can you tell us a little bit about the application process for students to attend the school?
Sure, yep. So, um, it's a public school, so they just, um, fill out the enrollment form on our website. And if we have a spot available, if they're applying for this year, then we would say, yes, we have a spot available, and they could, we could set a start date. Uh, we would do a records request, and they would become a student at Arcadia. But, uh, for the, for following years, then, like if they want to come next year, then we have a lottery system. The students would fill out the application online, and then I believe it's the first Monday in April, and we draw names. And if there are more people than spaces available, um, then the, through the lottery, um, that's the group of people that would, um, be offered a spot. Um, so it's, it's not, so it's not like a, an application process where they have to prove anything. It's a public school. Uh, so they are welcome to come simply because they are a student who would like to be there.
And you have an anticipation for if that number will be flat next year based on the number of graduating seniors and likely incoming students?
And so we're really sincerely hoping that we'll have eighteen incoming students. So a, a class size, the grade size, actually, Arcadia is eighteen students. Um, class size is very wildly depending on what people want to do as a class and what they want to do as a project. But, um, uh, it would be wonderful to have eighteen new students. Our senior class is very small. And so actually, if they graduate and we did have eighteen students come in, our enrollment would immediately increase by, uh, eight if they were, if it was full. So, um, so we've had, um, a certain amount of interest. Um, we haven't really done a ton right now of marketing. Um, but we have, we often have students from Prairie Creek who are interested, especially, uh, we've started talking a lot more about progressive education. I send out a weekly newsletter, and I've been working really hard to do some educational pieces around our model and around what progressive education can look like at the secondary level. Um, but I'm hopeful that we will actually increase somewhat. Um, one hundred twenty-six would be capacity. That would be eighteen in every grade. Um, and our goal actually for next year is one eighteen.
Okay, uh, one final question. You kind of segued it to it with the marketing reference. In your future plans, uh, document that you have here, you reference educating the community about the school's mission. Can you tell us a little bit about what you have done in the past as a school and what you're considering for the future to get the word out more?
Yes. So I think, um, social media, we had never had a social media account really, and so we've been, um, trying to work on using Instagram and Facebook, um, as a way to just give examples of things that we're doing. Um, and then putting text that helps tie that into our mission and explain sort of why it's meaningful. Um, we have, um, open houses. In the past, they've, there were a lot of open houses in the evenings. Um, I think I'm trying to help us narrow that focus a little bit, um, and do maybe fewer overall, but higher quality with a more polished presentation and, um, a little more in-depth time in the building to understand, the spaces actually really help, um, to understand the model because they are designed for, um, the model. So um, the marketing committee, like last year, we were really working on updating the look. So the last time the logo had been redone, I was actually on Arcadia's board in twenty twelve, I think it was, when the logo was redone, and they did a strategic planning. Um, so it had been a while, and it was a stock image of a tree with, uh, just, you know, it looked almost Times New Roman, like the font. And so, um, part of it is updating the image of the school. Um, and so I think those are some of our main marketing pieces. Uh, we usually send out postcards to fifth graders, um, in January. And we'll do that again this year. Um, and really, we're looking for eighteen students who are really excited about progressive, project-based education, and who really want to be a part of that model. And that's the kind of education that really will work beautifully for them. That's kind of who we're looking for, so.
Thank you.
Amy, questions or comments?
Yes, uh, hi Laura. Thank you for your presentation. Always good to hear about Arcadia. Now that you've been there a year and a half in the director position, and even though it's been the strangest year and a half possible, I just would like to hear from you, one thing that has impressed you about the school the last year and a half, something you've learned about it, whatever, however you want to answer.
Sure, ooh, can I say two things?
Yeah.
Okay, because one is the teachers and one is the students. Okay. So, um, I think when I was deciding whether or not to go to Arcadia, um, because I had a really pretty great role at Shattuck that I really enjoyed. And I visited the school for my interview, and there was a student who was having a bad day. And a, a student who had difficulties connecting with classmates. And one of the class, one of the student's classmates just came over and totally respectfully said, it looks like you're having a really hard day. So if you need someone to talk to, I'm here for you. And then just walked away. And I was so touched by the care that they showed each other, just constantly. So, ah, sorry, anyway. Been a long day. But yeah, that was, that was a moment for me that really stood out as this is the kind of place that I want to be an educator, where middle school students care for each other in that really heartfelt and respectful way. And so I think that was, um, one of the things that I just have found so amazing about this school is the depth of connections amongst the community there. Um, and the staff at Arcadia do such an incredible job of creating that environment, of creating that culture. And so it's, it's really an honor, um, to be a part of that.
Well, thank you. I didn't mean to make you cry, but, um,
We had, actually, we're interviewing new staff, so I've been up since like six, trying to get ready for that. But anyway.
Thank you. Good story.
Excellent. Thank you. Claudia, questions or comments?
Sure. Thank you, Laura, for sharing. Um, it's good to meet you. I was wondering if, um, Arcadia is also looking into their social studies and language arts curriculum for any, um, anti-races or equity issues?
We are so, um, and there are issues. We actually spent part of the summer, um, working toward changing our language arts curriculum. So right now, it's sort of, everybody reads the same book. Um, there is a fair amount of work to be done in that area. We did just adopt a new social studies curriculum. Um, but I think when we look at the classes that we tend to offer, or the choices that we make, um, so one of the areas that I, so I, I was an EL teacher, um, previously. And I feel like that's, that's an area where we have a lot of growth, and I just, I look at, you know, decisions that I was able to make and quickly change. Um, I want to see new book choices and new conversations happening around them. Um, so that is part of why, so the district advisory committee, um, I've tried to really pull in a group of people that would have excellent insight into, um, looking at the curriculum carefully and changing some of those choices. Um, we're also looking at running that as a bilingual committee and adding, um, the opportunity for students to actually do, like, um, so our projects, for example, could easily be done in a student's first language. Um, and they could actually do bilingual education then through high school. So, um, there's, there's a lot of work there that we've started, but that needs to continue in earnest.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, questions or comments?
Yeah, Laura, thanks for your report. Um, I, uh, just was wondering, you know, your comments on kind of the emotional, social aspects of kind of where we're at with this, uh, pandemic and how you keep, uh, students and staff kind of motivated and stuck together with, you know, sticking together, uh, to be positive, and then looking forward to, um, you know, some positive things happening and getting together, um, this, this spring and, and late winter.
So, um, like specific activities? Oh.
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it's a tough time, and I, I'm just kind of looking for a little bit of, you know, socially emotional, how do you keep people motivated and accountable? You know, including students and.
Sure. So with students, I, uh, tried to find things that would be inherently motivating to send home that they could do independently. So for the sixth graders, I sent home robots. And for the seventh graders, um, Tom's aware of the maker term, uh, where they can make really whatever they want. It's an outcome-based course, like there are four outcomes. If they can achieve those, great, you pass. Um, so trying to find things, one of the nice things about project-based learning is that it allows for a lot of differentiation. Um, and so letting students find things that they care about and want to do. Um, I think at the high school, um, students do a lot of one-on-one check-ins with teachers. And at the middle school, um, we're really working on doing a lot of small group work so that they have each other to be accountable to. And since especially for middle school students, I think, um, they really care a lot about peers, more than adults. So, um, but I, other than, I mean, you know, we're looking at like cardboard sleds and then going sledding. So I mean, some of it is finding fun things for us to do together, and some of it is finding ways to just engage people where they're at and what they're interested in.
Thank you.
Noel, questions or comments?
Philosophy and the financial report, and you gave information on field trips and so on, but I didn't see any report on academic progress. Can you fill me in on details?
So, um, that was where I was talking about the, um, we have one hundred percent of our students, um, completing those honors projects. Um, but we, so in terms of academic progress, um, I'm not quite sure what to look at. I can tell you that our scores up to this point have, um, averaged higher than state averages.
Do you publish those?
Yep, they're on the MDE report card. Um, they would be available. Yep. And you'll link.
I, I didn't see any report. I expected to see it there.
Um, I didn't include it because there's nothing from last year, because we didn't have MCAs last year. And so if I, I could pull up the, my report from last year and show you that.
Well, I've got last year's report, but I'm looking for this year. I'm presuming in twelve months, you've, you've got a different report.
Which data are you looking for?
Noel, let me just tell about Laura. Noel, last year, I think Arcadia did not get any, just like the public school district, we didn't get any formal state um, academic data, which would be why it's not included in the report this time around.
Okay. Right. Thank you, Dr. Homan. And that's all I have for questions for Laura.
All right. Thank you, Noel. Noel, thank you, Laura. Boy, in a year and a half, you have really come in and, and like Simon and, and uh, his staff, uh, you're. and, and, uh, his staff, uh, your vision and passion for progressive education just comes through loud and clear. And we see, you know, in, in your areas, you've touched on all the different ideas and the vision you have. And so we'll look forward to a report next year where you talk about the work that you're able to do this year. But I think, um, right now, we have to celebrate that, um, you, the excellent attendance that you're getting in distance learning. And I think that, that comes through, uh, credit for your team and yourself really working hard on that because that's, that's really excellent. And I think, um, you know, your priority of relationships is really well-placed, so. Um, thank you. We know you're exhausted. We know every day is challenging and we appreciate this, this excellent report. And most of all, as I said, your passion and your vision for progressive education. And we, like, like Prairie Creek, we, um, you know, we, we fully support the, uh, choice that Arcadia um, offers for, um, students. And we know they have a incredible experience when we're there. And we're really grateful for the, for the choice that you provide, um, Northfield students. So, thank you. Okay, so now we can move on to our next item for discussion and report. Um, we welcome Director of Special Services Cheryl Hall. She's going to talk about, um, the concept of maintenance of effort and then talk about some additional needs within, um, special education. Um, so welcome, Cheryl.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, I know it's getting late and it's a hard time of the evening to hear, uh, a, um, presentation on finance, but, uh, we will try to make this succinct. And I know I provided you with, um, some background information, so hopefully that will help us move along a little bit too. So as you can see, our intended outcomes today are really about just providing an overview of special education funding. It can be a little bit complex, as all school funding is, and, um, increase your understanding of maintenance of effort. And this is important because during this time, um, of COVID-19 and distance learning and all the, the different learning models, there's an impact on our maintenance of effort and that'll become clear as I, I talk a little bit more about that. And then we also need to talk about, um, and present some ideas of reviewing, um, some ways that we can decrease that impact on the general education budget. Uh, next slide. Uh, as you know, uh, we always talk about our general education student, or all of our students as general education students first. That includes our students with special needs. They do generate general education dollars first, and then we receive special education funds above and beyond that. Um, we have, uh, federal dollars as well as state dollars. And, um, and you also can think of that as, um, local dollars, which is the, uh, excess costs that are not covered by either of the federal or state. And that's our, our total special education revenue. And I did, um, put an asterisk there, um, next to the federal dollars because when, um, the federal law was first implemented in nineteen seventy-five and then reauthorized in two thousand and four, um, they promised forty percent of the cost, uh, that excess cost of special education above the general ed cost would be, um, covered by the federal dollars. Well, that has never, um, come to fruition. And, uh, today, we only, um, average-wise across all of the United States, only receive about fourteen point three percent of that forty percent promised. And when we look at, uh, our state and then our, our local, um, dollars that we receive, we really look at, we, we get, um, only about eight percent, um, locally. Um, because the state goes above and beyond the federal limits of, um, our federal regulations and standards for providing special education services. And we are mandated, uh, through the IEPs and through those statutes and rules to provide those, those services. So, um, you can go to the next slide. Thank you. So again, here is that federal special education revenue. Um, the total is a, a compilation of your child count, our special education child count in the district or in the state, actually the state's child count. And then our poverty index, it's, we get a percentage of all the students in the state that are free and reduced, plus the enrollment distribution of all students enrolled. You can go to the next slide. Here is an overview of our special education finance for Northfield Public Schools. You can see, um, from, we, we only put, um, the last three years here, um, twenty eighteen, nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty, and then current year. And you can see there's a slight increase there each year. And it, um, if we go back a little further, the, the, um, formula changed in twenty fifteen, the state formula changed in twenty fifteen. And we have seen our, um, costs increase by about ten percent each year. Um, that is, you know, our, our funding is just not keeping up with, um, the cost of living and the increases that we see in paying our salaries to our staff and, and the benefits, the cost of, of providing those benefits to staff. Uh, we also see increased costs in transportation. Um, and, and then our funding is, um, essentially staying about the same. Uh, and so we're seeing a greater, um, a greater disparity between what is, um, what our costs are and then what our, um, funding is. As you look at, um, the column there, um, under our fiscal year twenty-one budget, you'll see that we are at twelve million, two hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and twelve. And then our transportation costs, um, and then our federal aid is the aid that we receive and our state aid there. And then our Medicaid, um, is our MA billing that we're able to do, uh, locally. And we can, um, that we can add to our revenue through that MA billing that our related services such as OTPT speech can do, um, and our educational assistance, um, the services that they provide, we can bill back to Medicaid, uh, for those services. And that helps our district offset the cost. We use that to decrease the cost of salaries, um, and, or, and/or benefits that are not covered by our funding. Um, so, and then you'll see in the bottom is the cross subsidy. The cross subsidy is the amount of money that this local school district must put toward the special education, um, expenditures that are not covered in our, in, um, through the funding. And I'll have you go to the next slide, so I think that helps depict what is, um, happening in the district. In this graph, which I, I apologize, I know it's a little bit hard to, uh, read, and it goes by, uh, year. And on the very far right of the slide, you'll see that that is our current year. Um, in the, the, the large maroon, um, uh, bar is our current expenditures for special education. And that, you'll see that that total is the same as a total that was on the previous chart. Um, in the, in the, in the bar that is to the right, in the green, light gray or blue, yellow and dark blue, those are, that's our funds that come in. And so you'll see that there's a, a great difference between our expenditures and the funds that come into the district. Um, and you'll see that based on the, the color coding there, that, um, the yellow is our special education aid. And, um, this light blue here is the transportation aid. Uh, or I'm sorry, um, I'm having a hard time reading it myself, so it's a little bit harder, uh, to see. And, um, and you'll see that the, the total there, the idea is the total there is, um, is not reaching the amount that we need for our expenditures. That, that this is the, that discrepancy is the cross subsidy that we make up locally. Um, the green, I would like to point out that the green at the bottom is the tuition reimbursement that we get, uh, from our students that are, um, enrolled in our district, that are not resident districts. We, we can, um, bill for tho, those expenditures and we get that, that back. You can go to the next slide. I just want to, um, review just quickly because this is part, um, our, our, in child count or special education child count, every year is part of the formula for our federal and our state, um, funds. And you can see that since twenty eleven, our, uh, in our identification of students in special education has been going up. And, uh, the, as we talked about the disparity too, the number of students with more significant needs is going up in this population as well. And so, and, and that is not uncommon across the United States. We are seeing students with more significant needs, um, either that with, um, medical needs, mental health needs, um, or, or, and just in general, their, their needs are, are greater behavioral, um, needs, social, emotional, uh, well-being um, is also impacted. And you'll see that, um, we are at one of the highest levels that we've been at in a long time, um, in the district, uh, at six hundred and seventy-three. You'll see that from last year, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, we have dropped just slightly by about seven students, um, this year. And, um, by tracking those, we see that the pandemic has had an impact. We've seen some students leave the district, um, based on the pandemic, maybe moving to an online school that was already established, like the K-12 online programs. Um, and also, um, some students that I have, uh, unenrolled and, and are just homeschooling their students and, and, and providing the services, the, the parents are providing those services themselves. So we've seen that in a handful of students. You can go to the next slide. Um, this is, this next slide is, uh, our special education staffing. So e, even though our numbers are going up, you can see over the course of, um, several years here that our staffing, for the most part, has stayed, um, fairly stable. We have not increased, um, our staff. We know that when we do, um, increases in special education, we're going to be talking about maintenance of effort, that when we make an increase in special education, we have to maintain that level of expenditure from year to year. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a minute. You'll see that our, probably our, our greatest fluctuation there is our, um, paraprofessionals, our educational assistance, PCAs, um, you know, ranging from ninety-nine to, or ninety-three to about a hundred and ten. It goes up and down. This year, it's gone down a little bit just because of the changes with the pandemic. Uh, we would have expected it to stay close to a hundred and ten. And that's again, um, the supports our students need, uh, in order to access their, their general education, to be in their general education classrooms and/or to receive their special education services. Um, it, uh, it has been necessary to have more supports for, um, the needs of our students. And with the, uh, I would say, one of the impacts on there too is that inclusion in the general ed curriculum is an important piece. I get that making progress in the core is part of the expectations that we have to meet. You can go to the next slide. So I did speak just briefly about maintenance of effort. And, um, maintenance of effort is, is, is that requirement from, for the local education agency, the LEA, to, um, not replace state and local funding with federal funds. We must use our state and local funds, um, at the same level from year to year. So what does this mean, um, for us in, in, in Northfield? If we don't meet that, uh, we actually, it's a dollar-for-dollar withholding of our general education funds. And then we also have to replace those special education funds that we did not, um, expend. And so it's almost like a, a double, uh, jeopardy there of, um, and, and from year to year, we, we have to, um, pay that back in order, until we meet maintenance of effort again. You go to the next slide. Um, there are some exceptions to meeting the maintenance of effort. Uh, one of, uh, there are five different ways that we can, uh, reduce our special, special education expenditures. And, uh, that would be, uh, through voluntary departure of, uh, someone that's retiring. And then if we replace them with a lower-cost, um, staff member, so, um, someone who has been with the district for many years, of course, is at the highest end of the pay scale. And someone new coming out of school or a younger staff member, uh, would not, um, be as costly, um, be as high cost on the salary scale, scale. We could also look at a decrease in enrollment of children with disabilities in that child count. And we could go, um, reduce it by the amount, um, per child, um, that we would lose. So like I said, we have decreased our child count this past year, um, by seven students. So we could take that into consideration if our expenditures were lower for this year. A child, um, that might be, uh, like I said, with high needs, that is no longer in our district, maybe ages out of services or graduates, we no longer have that need. Then those large costs for educating that student would go away and that would be allowable. So, uh, we have had in the past, an, um, an American Sign Language interpreter that was required to meet the needs of a student, that student graduates. We no longer have that need and we no longer have that cost. So we would be allowed to go down by the amount of that, um, ASL interpreter. Plus, if there were other need, uh, other supports that were costly related to that student, we could also, uh, decrease our, our expenditures. The termination of costly expenditures, so sometimes we, uh, might need to be required to buy, uh, high and, uh, high need, high, high cost, um, equipment for a student. Say we need a, um, higher lift and that is a one-time expenditure. And then that higher lift is with us for a long time and, and we use that, but that expenditure goes away after that year. Um, termination of obligation, again, it could be the termination of an employee or the termination of some other kinds of services that we no longer need. And that would be, uh, those would be allowable reductions in, in our expenditures. And that would not be held against us for mo, and we would not have to pay that money back. You can go to the next slide. So why is this important the year of, um, with COVID-19 and thinking about last spring and, and fiscal year twenty? Well, in fiscal year twenty, at the end of last year, uh, when we were under the, um, the stay put and, and stay at home and stay safe, uh, we, no one was in school. We all had to be at home and there was no choice to come back in, in person. And at that time, uh, what they determined, um, the, the governor's orders and, uh, the state determined that special education funding would be maintained and expenditures would be maintained. And even though we were reassigning special education staff at that time, such as our paraprofessionals, we, um, we did not have to shift how we paid them. So even though they may have been supporting our tier-one childcare or helping with our distance learning with our students, even in general education, keeping those relationships, helping students, um, maintain, um, connections to their, and following through with their education. We did not have to pay them out of the general fund. We could, um, continue to pay them and get reimbursement for those positions through special education. So there was no impact. It was, it was, we didn't gain anything by that and we didn't lose anything by that. You can go to the next slide. So this year though, in COVID-19 and fiscal year twenty-one, it's a little different. Each district is determining based on the, the pandemic and the local, um, data and, and the guidelines that have been set forth by the state, whether we are in distance learning, hybrid or in person. And because of that, uh, the state, um, while we can still code our staff, our special education staff and expenditures, um, and we have the freedom to reassign them to help with tier-one childcare again, or, or help with other duties that need to be covered in the district, we also have to track those changes this year. And we are responsible to keep our maintenance of effort, um, and, and to, to have, um, expend the same amount of special education funds as we did in the prior year. So that becomes a little trickier for us. So what does that mean as we move forward? That means that we have to track all of these changes that we're, we're making. Um, and we have to know how much, uh, of our funds are going, are being reassigned and, uh, which staff are being reassigned. You can go to the next slide. So though, and, and I was just talking about those steps that we have to ensure mo, mo compliance. So identifying, tracking those, those staff changes. And we can also track our retirements from last year and say if we are, um, if we replace that, those individuals are not. Um, if they were educational assistance staff, we did not replace everyone right away. Uh, and, um, we still have some staff that we have not replaced. So that is a concern of, of we have not, um, we're not expending those dollars in special education. We also have to track, um, student enrollment and those changes we talked about earlier. Also, department. Also, department impact or determine impact of the December first child count decreases and special education transportation, use of vehicles. So right now, we know in distance learning, our vehicles are are not being used except for for the students that we're bringing in right now for intensive services. So there's a decreased cost to the district for special education transportation. And we can continue to pay our and we need to continue to pay our contractor, our Benjamin Bus for for those services because we need them when we come back in in session. And so it's it's important to maintain those services or retain those services. And but yet, it still won't be at the same cost as it was in past years. And that is, again, a maintenance of effort issue for us. So how can we? How can we mitigate this so that we can reduce the impact on our budget going forward? Well, one of the ways that we could do this is is considering our our compensatory services that we might need during the summer. If there are services that we were not able to provide to our students in distance learning, we may be required to look at providing those services going forward. Another option is to look at what additional special education staffing or programs need more support at this time, whether it's increasing something like occupational therapy, physical therapy or additional EA assignments. So those expenditures, we could determine that we could add some some staff to our current or our current, well, our current staff, special education staff to provide services. And and those costs then would help us to come up to the same level of the expenditures or or closer to the same level expenditures that we had in prior year without also requiring us to keep those staff on in subsequent years. So I do have a proposal. I think it might be the next, is it the next slide? Or there's a memorandum and then I'll I'll also, I'm going to present this and then we'll come back to the questions. So one of the options here is we have been tracking our occupational therapy time, early childhood special education. Has we've seen increases in early childhood special education numbers. That's one of the areas that continues to grow at at a larger amount than our other areas of special education. We have our occupational therapist currently is serving sixty-five students across all of the programs. Some of the impacts there, that's much higher than most occupational therapists serving any group of students. Usually, the case load or the workload is about forty-five students. And and with that, we have been tracking that for a while and know that we have not been able to make other adjust adjustments within our programs. Part of that is the pandemic makes this very difficult to manage, serving students online, in person. The the varying models that we have, the hybrid model that we use at early childhood is really creating some issues of of efficiencies. So we could add a occupational therapist this year, a one point oh for the rest of this school year. And that for a total cost of salary and benefits of forty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That is about fifty-five percent of that salary is reimbursed. And the net cost of that to the district would be about twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars for the rest of this school year. That would give us time to continue to do our projections for future needs as well and determine if that is an ongoing need that we were we will have. We've been holding off on adding any occupational therapy, physical therapy or other staff as much as possible due to the projected decrease in our enrollment that that Val has been talking about in our budget process. And so with thinking that our our enrollment is going to go down, we would think our special education numbers might decrease as well. Our census, if census goes down for early at early childhood, birth through age four, we would believe that our numbers in early childhood might go and go down. However, we are in a pandemic. We know that there's more stressors on our families. And there are more concerns about mental health and trauma to our students. And and we are seeing a significant increase in the needs of our students. We have more than doubled our programs with our significant needs at early childhood and our neurobiological program that serves our students on the autism spectrum, as well as our resource program, which also serves students that are maybe on the autism spectrum, but have more emotional, emotional and behavioral needs. We have never seen this larger a group of young youngest children, ages two to five, with such significant needs and with such significant supports necessary to meet those needs ongoing. So with that, we'll go back to, are there any questions? I know I kind of went through that quickly.
Excellent, Cheryl. Thank you. So I will ask board members if they have any questions on the special education finance and maintenance of effort presentation and as well as the request to hire an additional licensed special education staff person at the Northfield Community Education Center for Early Childhood Special Education. So either of those two or members have questions or comments. I'll start with Tom.
Thanks for the report. And I don't know how you keep track of all this and all the the rules and the the changes. So I I think that's a good plan, what what you're suggesting. So I'm I'm on board with that. And don't really have any other questions other than, you know, we're going to have a new administration. Have you heard anything, fingers crossed, anything that possibly things will be changing in the future, either at the state or at the federal level?
Yes. Well, one, we will be getting a new Secretary of Education that we think that will be a positive thing. Also, the President-elect Biden is also proposing that for full funding of the IDA, so that forty percent, meeting that forty percent as promised. So that's something that is in his budget proposals coming forward. I will see where that goes. And then also, as you heard, I said that the reauthorization of IDA was in two thousand and four. That's a long time for for reauthorization not to occur again. And so we are looking forward to the reauthorization of the federal law as well.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Great questions, Tom. Thank you. Cory?
Hey Cheryl, two questions for you, one looking back, one looking forward. As I look at the finance summary, looking at FY nineteen compared to FY twenty, and I realize this is multi-pronged and nuanced, so maybe you don't have an answer for me tonight. But expenditures went up, so I'm assuming we have more students with higher needs because we have student reduction of, I think you said it was seven. But my question's more about federal aid, why there was a reduction in that. Is that most likely tied to the poverty index? Or do you think there's a another reason why we saw a reduction in that from nineteen to twenty?
That is a good question. And I I don't, and maybe Val can jump in and and talk a little bit about that too. Yes, so the the child count is December of of this path, this current year. And so it would not be based on our child count right now. And so it is somewhat surprising that it went down. But it is, there was a slight reduction this year. And Val, you can probably jump in and with more detail, maybe with that one.
Yeah, so the the actual numbers, we, in addition to, so all of the federal funds, you have like a twenty-three month window to spend. So we have historically carried over funds every year. And so the numbers in the actual are both the current year allocate or most of a current year allocation and then prior year allocation, whatever was remaining typically between thirty-five and fifty thousand, I would say in a given year. And so that can fluctuate depending on what needs we have seen in that year. We might have chose to use a little bit more of our carryover funds. If we needed to buy a particular piece of equipment or something, trying to keep that out of Moe and having to deal with the headache Cheryl talked about. So that's why you see that fluctuation. On overall, the annual allocation has been very consistent. But how we have spent it has maybe fluctuated from year to year.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you. The other question, looking forward, if approved, how quickly can we get the occupational therapist onboard?
Well, that's a great question. We always have to post for at least minimum of five days. However, we are a district that usually has student teachers or internships. And luckily, we just had an occupational therapist finish her internship with us this past December and is currently working on being able to be licensed to to work in a position. So and is very interested in staying with us if that were at all possible. I don't know if she's still available or not, but I that would be one possibility. The other is to possibly contract with a service that would also be able to provide us with somebody as a on a temporary basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy, questions or comments?
Yes, I have two questions. And wow, first, I just have to say, Cheryl, my head is spinning. It feels like it's going to pop. That's a lot of information, a lot of confusion. I think I understand what you're explaining and just a lot of paperwork. So I'm glad it's you and not me that has to keep track of all of that. But my two questions are this, the the first question is, ultimately, are we spending more money on special education because we're hiring somebody new? Or is that money offset by savings because we don't have these other positions? Or the other, you know, I know they're being used differently as well. So is it more money out of the budget? That's the first question. And the second question is, is this a permanent position? So are we signing up to do this year after year after year? Or would it just be through the end of the year?
Great, great question. So first of all, this position would would help us to expend more money that we would would have been expending had we had everybody in their positions as planned for this this current year. So let's say we have five educational assistants that have been reassigned for the last five weeks. And that cost is probably about thirty thousand dollars. And so this hiring would help us to to offset that loss in in that expenditure, if that makes sense. And then ongoing, like I said, I would like to have some time yet this spring as we do our projections ongoing, if this is going to be an ongoing need or not. Our our needs have been going up and this is the second year in a row that we have been struggling to for at least one of our occupational therapists to be able to meet the needs of all of our students. Last year, we were struggling at the elementary level and we were able to work through that more on a temporary basis, using our other occupational therapists. It's just has not been possible to do that this year with the pandemic.
Okay, so let me try to repeat repeat back what I think you answered. So this is not necessarily a permanent position, but it might move into a permanent position.
Correct.
And that we're not spending extra money, even though we are spending extra money, but the extra money that we're spending will be reimbursed while the extra money that we are already had or forced to spend won't be reimbursed. And I'm making things more confusing, but ultimately, the money that we're spending is reimbursed, so it's all works out. Is that correct?
It it allows us to, because the the general fund has to pay for those positions, those educational assistant positions that we moved to tier-one childcare. So our general fund has to cover those. And our, so our special education expenditures in that area went down. And so this would replace those costs and bring our special education expenditures back up so that we can hopefully meet maintenance of effort. And so in the long run, it will save the district money year, next year and maybe the year after, if we can meet maintenance of effort.
Yeah, I, all right, that's sort of what I was trying to say, but you said it much more clearly. But ultimately, because we're holding on to those other employees, which is important, we're spending more money out of the general one budget.
Can I, is it okay if I jump in, Cheryl?
Absolutely. I was just going to say that.
So at the end of the day, what I think you're asking, Amy, is yes, this would be an add to the budget, the total budget number at the end of the year, this is additional funds. And I think what Cheryl's trying to say is we're the states requiring us to spend the same amount on special ed as we did the prior year. However, all of the tier-one workers, which are special education EAs primarily, we cannot code too special at this year. We could last year, so it was kind of just to hold harmless, everything operated the same, but that is not the case this year. So I think Cheryl's point is if we don't do this, because we cannot claim them, we still have to pay them because they're obviously working for the district, we would get hit with maintenance of effort, which is a double whammy as she talked about. So yes, this is an add to the budget, but it's intended to keep us from not being in compliance with Moe and obviously address the issues that we're having with our occupational therapist loan. Does that help?
Yeah, no, I I understand that. But the add to the budget in my perspective is really the fact that we took the educational assistance and moved them over into the other budget. And that's the add to the budget in a sense. But we need to hold on to them. They're good employees. And I just want to say, I think special education is important in general, but especially with early childhood. It's a good time to be working with them and getting them back right on track. So I definitely support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Claudia, questions or comments?
Yes, thank you. Would the occupational therapist be only at the NCEC site? Or with the or she travel to other sites as well? Otherwise, just meeting the needs of our youngest student population or shared?
That is something that, yeah, I believe, yes. But if we found, as we got into it, we found that that she did have more time, there is a potential that our elementary schools could use some extra support. And so we could look at making sure that if there was a need, other places that we could also shift some of that time to other places as needed. I think it's been really hard to predict what what we're going to need going forward just because students have not been in school.
Right. And so that leads to another question I had. The special education funds can only be used for those students have been identified as special education students. So I'm thinking, you know, we're going to start seeing more and more of our students manifest those behaviors that have been brought on by the pandemic, but not many of them are not going to be labeled or classified as special ed. And so these funds would not be, we wouldn't be able to access these to say, you know, have additional counseling available or social, emotional curriculum. They would have to be identified special ed students, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Jeff, questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks for the robust conversation here, a lot of issues being talked about. And I think that I would just rather see we focus on whatever the short term is and get by the pandemic part and just figure out the long term later. But whatever we're voting on, probably, when would that be that we would approve that position?
That Jeff, this, we would have this for an item for individual action at our January twenty-fifth board meeting.
Good. Well, I look forward to hear more about that and voting on that, but I'm in favor of doing what we need to do.
Thank you, Jeff. Noel, questions or comments?
Thank you for your report. Help me understand something. I understand because of the coronavirus, we didn't do as much transportation as last year. So to maintain our our maintenance of effort, we we need to pay the same transportation we paid last year, even though we didn't use it.
That's correct, Noel. We do. That's correct, Noel. We do, we are allowed to pay our for that transportation. We do ask that, and Val, I think recently had a meeting regarding this, but and she can talk to specifics. But one of the areas that we could ask for reduction is in the fuel costs or insurance costs if they had less costs there. And that they give us some credit for that, but that we maintain, we help them to to continue to. Hold on to the bus drivers that we know we're going to need.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, and we are, just so you know, we are paying slightly less than we did last year. To actually calculate it the way the state recommends is virtually impossible. So we took an average of the the transportation that we have been doing when we were in hybrid and in person in the elementary. And then they're putting that discounted amount on top of that. So we're saving about a hundred and eighty dollars a day. In the fuel costs and other things, but. Spending a little over four thousand a day for the actual transportation, so.
I'm not gonna make an editorial comment, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Yeah, save me.
I I think we've just spent a lot of time on this, and I'm wondering if there would be any advantage to seeing if we could have the vote on it tonight. So the hiring process and get someone in earlier, or is is it fine to wait two weeks? I guess that's to you, Dr. Hillman. What do you think?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. Typically, we try not to ask you to approve a financial item the same evening that it's presented. It's it's not unheard of. We have done it from time to time. My understanding is that we would be able to wait these two weeks to be able before we were to prove that. Cheryl, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
I I didn't hear that whole question. What was?
What what Amy is asking, is there a benefit? Would it be advantageous for you, for the board to consider moving this to an item for individual action? This evening to be able to approve it so that you could immediately get the position hired?
There's always advantage to that, yes.
So.
I am lying.
I think the other part, Amy, is that something that we've done in the past, when we when we believe we're on the right track. Is we can post something, as we call an anticipated opening, so that we can we can get the position posted, it's posted as an anticipated opening. So that would mean by the time that the board acted upon this at the next meeting, they potentially could be ready to have the person go the next day or the day after. So Cheryl, my question is. Is is this such an emergency that you need the person by next week? We typically will wait to make sure that the public has had a chance to see this additional expenditure during the year.
I I think we can wait the two weeks.
Thank you.
And Amy, we want to use that when when we come to you with that, where we're asking for it in the same evening. We want you to trust that when we bring it to you, that is that we have to have this now, which is why we have the two step process. To make sure that you have a chance to hear the presentation at one meeting and then vote on it at the next.
And I understand that, but I also thought since we're in the middle of the year and that basically this is money that. We have to spend to meet requirements that it may made sense to move it up and and have a vote tonight. But whatever works for you.
I think we can have everything ready with an anticipated opening. I think we can have everything very close to being ready by the time you were to consider voting on it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And I I did do this calculation as of the start of the second semester, which is the end of January. So just so you have that information.
That's a great point. Thank you, Val. Okay, thank you. Board members, really great questions and comments regarding this. This weighty topic, school finance is never easy, but boy, you start talking about special education finance. And that's a whole nother stratosphere. So Cheryl, thank you. We always, you know, typically you come to the board when you have to. To ask for positions and it's it's quite staggering to read that special education, early childhood special education. Has gone from one point five sections to four sections. I mean, that's just this really, really staggering growth. And and I agree that, you know, we have collectively talked about how we we just feel it's such an advantage to catch. These students early and we hope as as Dr. Hillman always says, it's a it's a red letter day. When we see that they're able to exit from the program. So thank you for your work. And before you go, I do want to just acknowledge that you have been our COVID coordinator for the district. And that it is a full time job in itself. And on top of everything happening with special education, we just can't thank you enough. And we know now with with students returning, as of January nineteenth, that's going to suddenly. Change the dynamics for that position that you have done such an incredible job. And so we are so grateful for what you have done. And I don't know if you sleep talk in the middle of the night around contact tracing and all these other things. But we hope you are finding some time to to re-energize because you have quite a full plate. Not unlike others in the district, but taking that COVID, that COVID coordinator leadership position has has really. No doubt stretched you and we're just really grateful for your work.
Thank you for those words. I appreciate the support. And I, again, I, we have a phenomenal team and that's the only way we get these things done is through this phenomenal team that we get to work.
Well, great. Well, thank you, Cheryl. Get some rest at this late hour. And speaking of the late hour, I can use that as a segue. We do have in our bylaws that we are not able to meet past ten P M unless we pass a motion. So looking at the hour of nine fifty four P M and some additional items we need to work through. I would ask for a motion to extend our meeting past ten P M. Julie, I have a question.
Yes.
Would it make sense to table the policy discussions until the next meeting? And then still, we'd still have to have the motion to keep the meeting, to allow the meeting to go past ten o'clock? Dr. Hillman, if you want to weigh in, if you feel that is a recommendation based on timing of the discussion and report. I I do know there are two fairly weighty policies there to review. So if you wouldn't mind weighing in on the impact of your work if we were to to make that motion.
Yeah, I I don't think it's necessary to table it because this is simply the opportunity for board members to ask questions. But because we wouldn't have this full of a discussion as we normally would, we could bring the these policies back to the next two meetings. So people, we we have published them to the public for this evening. We could use the time next time for you to ask questions and then approve them the following meeting. So I don't think it's necessary to take a motion to table it. We could simply present it. And if if people have questions, if they want to hold them until the next time, that is one way that we could do that.
Do we need a motion to do something then? No motion at all for that? Okay. Nope, Amy, because it's not an actual item for individual action as well. So I think Dr. Hillman's suggesting that we go, we follow the agenda of policy committee recommendations. And then as part of just our initial discussion, board members decide that we're going to take the opportunity to review the policies as presented. And have more robust discussion at our January twenty fifth board meeting. Okay, so with that in mind, I would like to move that we. Allow ourselves to go past ten o'clock for this meeting. Okay, so we have a motion to extend our board meeting past ten P M. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so moved by Amy, second by Corey. I will ask for a roll call vote from Anita to approve the motion.
Ronnieak?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinell? Quinell?
I said aye, I don't know if you heard me, aye.
Stratmon?
Okay, motion carries. We will move forward in in the on the agenda. So our next item for discussion is financial update from our district finance director, Val Murdestor.
Thank you. I will keep it pretty brief. I just have a couple of things that I wanted to talk through tonight. So as for the coronavirus relief funds or the C R F funds. You may have seen that part of the new, the newly passed thing was extending the deadline for that. But M D E in the state of Minnesota has not chosen not to extend it. So the deadline was still December thirtieth. It did, however, allow for more time for my office to reconcile it, which I was very grateful for. So we are working through that just to make sure we have all of the pennies in the right spots. But we. Very contrary to any federal funds that I've had, they asked us to draw all the money before we knew we had spent it, which is very, very unusual. So we have already drawn the funds and we're just putting everything in the right spots to reconcile with M D E. And the new cares funding that was authorized, our initial estimate. Is just shy of about one point three million. We, I have heard conflicting information about when it'll be available. And so we're waiting to get some formal guidance about not only when it will be available, but how we can spend it. We're hoping for a little bit more flexibility this time around, which will be welcome. And so we will work with our leadership team to talk through. And then my department and our leadership team is just getting ready to start digging into budgets for the next year. This is the time of year we start really diving into that. And I believe our schedule this year will be sort of in between what we've done the last two years. So it was a little bit accelerated last year since I was going on leave. But we we liked the opportunities that that provided, so it won't be quite as accelerated. But it will be a little bit. Sooner than it was previous. So my goal would be for the general fund budget to be probably presented. At the first meeting in May, for sure. Typically, it was the last meeting, even the last one in April would be great. But obviously, there's a lot of moving pieces with COVID and all the various budget conversations we've been having. So we'll play that out as the information is available. And then just. We did get some information that there's potentially some relief for the meal benefit application process. So we've talked about the impact that that had on our compensatory estimate. As well as potentially our title one funding. So we did get some information that they are approving. Some kind of hold harmless measures specifically for title one. I haven't seen anything specific for compensatory, which is the larger concern. But gives us a little bit of hope that we're moving in the right direction and that they're listening to our concerns. And then the last item I just wanted to touch on, I talked at length at the last board meeting. About budgets and a bunch of various topics. And so. Just know we are planning to ask for consensus at the next board meeting regarding formally pushing the budget reduction process. One year as we talked about. But we are working with the leadership team in the meantime to identify any kind of modest budget savings that we can do. Now that are not not impactful for the classroom, I would say is kind of our parameter that we're looking at. And so we are working through that, but that will be at the next board meeting for sure. So if you have any questions about anything financial, I would gladly answer any questions you have.
Excellent. Thanks, Val. Questions or comments?
No questions or comments, thanks.
Corey, questions or comments?
No questions, thank you.
Amy, questions or comments?
As always, Val, thank you so much for all your good work on behalf of the school district.
My pleasure.
Questions or comments, Claudia?
None. Thanks, Val, for your work.
Okay, thank you. Jeff, questions or comments?
Thanks, Val. No questions or comments?
Noel, questions or comments on Val's report?
I just unmuted myself, so no questions, thank you.
All right, thank you. Val, thank you for the update. And I know it's just just constantly moving pieces in terms of the finances of the district. And we're just so grateful for your for your relentless oversight. My question on the one point three million, which I believe was four times. They just basically said school districts multiply what you got last time times four. Do you know if there's going to be any spending deadlines to that money that we're going to have some restrictions around when that one point three million needs to be spent?
It wouldn't surprise me because it's federal money. There there were, there will absolutely be a window. So almost all federal funds have a twenty three month window. So my my assumption at this point, we've heard that it would potentially be available in January. I highly doubt that. But if it's the the federal fiscal year ends September thirtieth. So most of the time what we see is July one through September thirtieth of the following year. Is typically the window we would see. I I wouldn't anticipate any restrictions within that window where you would have to spend percentages by a certain amount of time. Or anything like that, but we would definitely have a hard start and end date.
Okay, great. Sounds like a little more flexibility than December thirtieth of.
Yes, definitely more than six months, which.
Well, we're grateful for the money, so you know, for 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 the funds that they're they're going to to provide to us to offset the pandemic. So thank you. Thanks, Val, for the report. Okay, so we'll move on now to follow the agenda, which includes the next item is the policy discussion. In light of the the potential recommendation to. Do the the weighty discussion of these four policies at our January twenty fifth board meeting. Dr. Hillman, do you, do we want to just proceed with some sort of a brief overview? Or do we want to have the discussion at the next board meeting? What what do you think might be most beneficial beneficial at this juncture?
Yes, I'll just give a brief statement that the four policies that you have in front of you, three of them are existing policies. Actually, two of them are existing policies. One would be a potential new policy, which we're actually going to do some additional work on for you by the time that you see it at the twenty fifth. And then the other is one of my all time favorite policies, which is the policy says that this policy also applies to all these other people. So there's there's some real, there are some meaty stuff in terms of this chemical abuse and and a couple of the other ones. But I think that the bottom line is they've been entered into the public record for people to be able to see in their draft format. And certainly, we will, if people have any questions between now and the next board meeting, we can work to do any fleshing out of things that you have a concern at this stage of the game. And then what I will just say is since we're not going to have this formal discussion until the next board meeting, Anita will push the item for approval to the following board meeting. To make sure that you don't have to to discuss and vote in the same meeting.
Okay, thank you. So so this does not qualify as a first reading of those policies?
I think technically it could, but I I don't, I think that what we're going to do is just say this was for your information. We'll do the first reading at the next meeting.
Okay, excellent. I think what I'll do, though, is run quickly through the board members if they have any quick questions or comments. And then I think if you made any notes or had any specific questions, that those could be directed to Dr. Hillman and Anita Ozzy. And we can potentially review those for additional drafts that are our next meeting. So Tom, do you have any specific sort of overview type questions on the on the policies?
Well, I have several questions. So you're saying I should like bring them to Matt over the next two weeks and maybe work some of them out or just get a better understanding? And then at the next meeting, we'll we'll talk about, do the first read, and then the next meeting, we'll do the 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 voting on it.
Exactly. And I think that as board members weigh in with some some questions. Dr. Hillman and I actually met today and and talked about a few changes. And and as as I wanted to present those tonight, just so that I understood what what some of the policy. just so that I understood what, what some of the policy nuances were. So I think in that case, yes, Tom, if you could just get those, we'll have maybe an additional wordsmith copies for January 25th. That reflects some of those initial comments by board members.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Excellent. Great question. Thanks, Tom. Corey, questions or comments initially?
No questions for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Corey. Amy?
I have some comments that I'll share individually with Matt.
Excellent. Thank you. Claudia?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Jeff?
No questions, no comments. Thank you.
Great. Noel?
No questions, no comments. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Board members, thank you for, for that. And I think as Dr. Hillman said, this, this is a, a meeting open to the public this evening, an agenda that was published so that community members and district stakeholders do have the opportunity to review those policies as well in the next coming, actually January 25th and beyond. Okay, excellent. So we will move then on to COVID-19 update. Dr. Hillman?
So this is the time that I pull my two, two hour PowerPoint slideshow, right?
These are the jokes, folks.
Right. We gotta keep you guys on your toes here, but I wanted, I want to start with something that I, I hope Sam Wilmus might have stayed on the call. I think he probably is still here, but I'm going to use a word that we have been hoping for, for a long time. And this is hot off the press from just this afternoon. And the word is vaccination. And so we will, we will start to see our employees who qualify for tier one A, which are those who are healthcare professionals. So that will include our school nurses. It will include service providers who provide close contact services to students. And our PCA is we will start to see the first vaccinations of our employees next week. And we are very grateful to Northfield Hospital, Rice County Public Health. They are working through, as you've read across the country, there is some hiccups, shall we say, in the distribution of the vaccine for a variety of different reasons. But we will start to see, we are just getting this information, but I could not hold this back from you. So vaccinations will happen. I, I cannot adequately express my satisfaction for that. We are also starting to work on a plan for one B. The rest of school staff are part of one B. And we are learning what will happen with one B from the state level. We haven't seen the plan from the state level yet. So please know that the light at the end of the tunnel is getting here. It does not mean that we can go backwards on the mitigation protocols that we've done, but we are moving forward in a positive way. So I wanted to start off with what I think is the best news I have heard in quite some time. So that was a really good piece. I'm going to keep mine fairly brief. So just want to highlight on the return to campus plan. And I'm going to just share my screen here so we can see the return to campus plan. Making sure that board members are aware of what our plans are at this point. And again, what we are looking at right now is we are looking at moving ahead with our early childhood preschool and kindergarten through second grade students return to campus next Tuesday, January 19th. Third through fifth grade coming back on February 1st. And again, remember that both of those grade level bans no longer are beholden to the county data that we have been held to in the past. So though that county level infection rate per 10,000 residents no longer applies to preschool or to elementary schools. It does apply to middle and high schools. We are, we believe that we are continuing down the road of being able to bring our middle school and high school students back in a hybrid model on February 2nd. We do have a consult with the Minnesota Department of Health this week to verify that. But we still need to emphasize people have to follow the precautions because we are starting to see, I'm going to share with you this piece of data here. This is the Rice County weekly incidence rate. We're looking here at the Maroon Line. You'll see at our peak in mid-November, we have continued to go down week over week since, for, for quite some time now, where we're now down into 60, 66 or 62 per 10,000 residents last Thursday. So 62.19 last, going in the right direction. But we still have much work to do in that area. I also do want to share with you just another piece that we are tracking because I want people to know that we are completely aware of these things and working to the best of our ability to be on top of them. I do want to share with you, we are now updating our dashboard weekly as opposed to daily when students are in distance learning. We have started to see parents reporting again. What I want to highlight here is right now we are looking at 19 active cases amongst high school students. And so if you look at the dates, quite a few of those are right after New Year's Eve. This is exactly why we didn't come back this week. It's exactly why we didn't come back right away on January 4th. We wanted to make sure that any of those final gatherings at the end of the holiday season could work themselves through. So good, the good news is we've had very few, if any, close contacts as a result of that. But we are watching that very carefully and that will have an impact on whether or not we can bring our high school students back. Right now I think we're on track, basically. But we have to continue to watch that our athletes are back. As you know, they started back on January 4th. We've got community ed rentals going. So the current return to campus plan is progressing as indicated. But we just have to make sure people know that this can change at a moment's notice. We know this is a very infectious virus that if we are not careful, the numbers can go straight back up just like they did in late October and early November. So wanting to point that out. Couple of other items in my report this evening, wanted to share with you about our pilot testing. Oh, I do want to make one other comment back to the return to campus plan. Need to amend something that I wrote as I, you all know that I take great pride in making sure I give you the correct information. In the document that I shared with you for this evening, it said that the state was requiring all employees to wear face shields with face masks. That was changed after they came out and said, yep, everybody's got to do this. About a week later, they came back out and said, well, no, now it's strongly recommended. We brought this to our incident command team last Friday to determine, did we go beyond what the state recommendations were? We have determined we will not go beyond the state recommendations. So tomorrow I'll be releasing some guidelines for our staff. While they will all be provided with face shields and are strongly recommended to wear both in tandem. They are not required to, and we're directing employees to not basically criticize people one way or the other, whether or not they choose to wear a shield. We're giving some additional guidance about the times where we think it's the most helpful. But we have made our living on this and we've been successful at following the state guidance to the best of our ability. So I just want to correct what I had in the narrative. The pilot testing program, we were so thrilled with its success. You had in your packets, you saw the total number of tests over three weeks, about almost 1,600 tests given, a total of 33 positive tests, a 2.1 positivity rate, which M D E said was one of the lowest positivity rates that they had seen in their community style testing sites like we had done. We are having testing available to our staff, hopefully beginning next week. That's what we anticipate. Staff will be able to get a test every other week. Those are coming from the state for free. We have also ordered some of our own tests to have on site for a handful of pilot projects that we're working on to support students and keeping our, as many classes and students in school as we possibly can. So the testing program, Anita, great job helping organize. We're so grateful to Heather Hirsch from the Department of Health. We really had a very positive piece and we really are, we really believe we had an impact on the determination that this could be done statewide. Final piece is I had shared with you the 90 day pulse survey results. I'll give you a very high level overview. Really pleased that we turned the employee survey around significantly. You'll see I've included the October results and the, and the, and the results from December. You'll see in some cases, the work that we did in what we call top two box, which is the combination of people who selected agree or strongly agree, really had a significant improvement. So just by way of example, you take a look at the one where we're looking at, let's take for example, I am confident that our school system will overcome these challenges. We went from 59% of the respondents saying they agree or strongly agree at the 30 day mark to 85% in the 90 day mark. There are four things that I think that we did to gain confidence employees. Number one, I believe that one of the most important things is that we brought back our monthly webinars. Cheryl and I are doing a monthly COVID update webinar. We do two of them. We actually did a, a bonus edition in December after the safe learning plan got updated. We think that that's one thing. Second thing is we really worked hard to clarify, if I had a concern about COVID-19 in my building, we clarified what the role of the building level committee was. We encouraged the building level committees to publish their agenda and share their notes after the meeting. We believe that that was very successful. We also did something that we called mini rounding. You may know that we use a practice called rounding with our employees. We, our goal is to do that with every employee twice a year. I pushed our administrative team and they delivered because I asked them to do a mini rounding, which was a very short connection. It could be by text message, it could be by phone or by email with every remote worker over a period of two weeks, once a week. We did well over 600 connections over those few weeks. And so in effect, that's even more than that. If I go back and count, I think it's over 1,000 actually, as I think about it now. And so we think that those intentional check-ins also made a significant difference. I also believe the implementation of the voluntary testing program demonstrated to our employees that we are willing to go above and beyond and do something that no other school that we are aware of in Minnesota was doing in this partnership with the Minnesota Department of Health to be able to offer onsite free testing to employees for that pilot period. Those are the four things that we think that we did turn around the employee piece, very proud of that. Same time, we also saw a reversal in our parent scores and not in the good way, right? We also saw almost only half the participation. We use the same strategy that we always use to garner parent feedback by using the rule of three, making sure that we reach out to people three times. What I will tell you is when we read through every comment, which we have clearly, I believe the assessment of the data is that people really, while they understand that we are doing the best that we can in distance learning, they see the value of in-person learning and are willing to do whatever it takes to be able to make that happen. So I do think that that's the main reason based upon my analysis of the data. However, we just need to acknowledge that we will read all of those comments. We will do a, an analysis and create an action plan to move forward. We did listen to the feedback from parents in October and we did, I think we did six consecutive Sunday nights where I hosted a parent webinar. We ranged from 20 people to 80 people in those webinars focused on how can I support my student in reading? What's the current public health situation, some of those kinds of things? So that did not make as big of a difference in the data as we thought, though we know that the people who did attend them did find them valuable because we got anecdotal feedback that suggested that. So those are the items that I have for you this evening in my COVID-19 report.
Excellent. Thank you. And yeah, we, we just can't, can't be excited enough about hearing vaccine and, and, and that was actually rolling out. And we are grateful for Northfield Hospital and we have been so grateful for Sarah Coulter and the, the regional support teams. They have just been so good in helping to navigate not only testing, but also now obviously vaccinations, which is absolutely huge. So very exciting at this late hour to hear that. So board members, questions or comments about the COVID-19 update?
No questions, comments?
Corey?
Dr. Hillman, concerning the one B rollout, is there a tentative timeline on that?
Corey, I have not seen a timeline yet. Based on the current timeline, I think you could start to see someone be in probably early February. We, we've heard from M D H that they believe they can have one A completed by the end of January. That's I think a pretty aggressive timeline, but I think they spent a lot of time training people so that it could go quickly. So I would anticipate to see one B start to move sometime in February.
Thank you.
I could just make a comment as well. One thing that Sarah Coulter talked about at our command team meeting on Friday was, you know, not to, to compare our necessarily Rice County district with the rollouts that you may be seeing in other districts. Because again, it's not apples to apples. So some, some counties may not have as many congregate settings or as many healthcare workers. And so you know, why we have, you know, those, those target dates, you may see that counties will be able to escalate to a one B rollout quicker than another. So you know, depending on the, the numbers within each of one A, one B, and then hopefully when we get to one C, that, that those will vary. But we have great confidence in Rice County and our partnership with Northfield Hospital that those will roll out officially. And of course they're at the mercy of what vaccines they get from the federal government as well. But I thought that was a nice point that she made and one that we have to be important, we have to be mindful of and that, you know, counties just north or south of us may be doing different things. And it's not that they necessarily have a more organized sort of rollout plan. It's just the, the composition of the different tiers that, that need to be worked through before they can, they can move forward.
Great point Julie. Thank you.
Amy, questions or comments?
Yes, Matt, thank you for your strong leadership and excellent communication during this unprecedented time in our school history.
It is my pleasure.
Claudia?
Thank you for the, the analysis on the parent survey. Appreciate your insight on that. Great job.
Thanks.
Jeff, questions or comments?
Yeah, Matt, thank you for the briefing on COVID-19. No questions or comments?
No questions or comments?
I keep muting myself. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. No questions, no comments.
All right. Well, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Hillman. I mean, this is, it, it's just really incredible how you're able to just keep so many of these, juggling all of these different competing priorities and keeping all of this, keeping us moving forward. And I think we're all very hopeful that as we move back to campus and hopefully secondary being able to follow in the news of vaccines that were, were really on a quite a significant uptick here. So thank you so much for your work and for the report. So that is it for reports. We can move on now to the approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, I believe there were some personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. So is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping for separate consideration? I won't go through roll call, but I will pause for anyone who has anything they'd like to pull. Okay, not hearing anyone. Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. We have a motion and a second. Anita, if we could have a roll call vote?
Ronnie?
Hi.
Butler?
Hi.
Gerwitz?
Hi.
Gonzalez, George?
Hi.
Richard?
Hi.
Quinell?
Hi.
Stratmon?
Hi.
Motion carries. We can, again, we do, do not have any items for individual action this evening. So we can move on for items for information. Dr. Hillman, we have two items for information tonight, one being the enrollment report.
Yeah, so you had the latest enrollment report in your packet. You will see that we've declined a little bit again compared to last month. And the, the numbers are what they are. So we are seeing that our grand total, including early childhood and a part-time ALC is at 4,029. And our full time only, which you'd consider to be the K-12 students typically who are here every day at 3876.
Okay, thank you. I'll run through board members quickly if they have any questions on the enrollment report. Tom?
Pass.
Corey?
No questions.
Amy?
No questions.
Claudia?
No questions.
Jeff?
Questions?
Noel?
Pass.
Okay, thank you for the enrollment report. So we will move on to our last item for information, which is rock and roll revival update. It is a rock and roll revival year. And there are some plans to accommodate for this amazing event and the pandemic. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and this is just a very brief, there's no big announcements or anything other than that we are, you know, thanks to Ray Cudray and Bob Gregory Bjorkland and Sherry Satchel. They are planning to hold a rock and roll revival. They are preparing for the, the auditions for that. It will be, the current plan is that it would be held toward the end of the school year outdoors. Think of it as a drive up kind of parking lot kind of event. They are looking at having a reduced cast, probably, probably about half what they normally have just simply due to the fact that they are planning to have pods so that the same pod of students would do several songs together. So if you've seen a rock and roll in the past, you know, people are in multiple songs, but it will just have to be scaled down. So. So, you know, I applaud that, you know, we are pleased to see the restarting of athletics. We are also pleased to see that there may be a way that now that we know more about the virus and how it transmits and how outside is so much safer, that we potentially could pull off a rock and roll revival. As you know, this would be the final opportunity for two grade levels to be able to do this. So I applaud Ray and Bob and Sherry for having what I think the initial plan is fairly creative to try to make sure that students have that one last experience. And everyone understands in this that we are subject to the whims of the virus and the pandemic, and that that could, of course, influence this as well.
Excellent, thank you. And if there's a team, if there's ever a team that could pull that off, it's Ray, Greg, and Sherry, and as well as their, you know, dedicated volunteers and support that they have, you know, pulled this off multiple years. So anyway, I will run through, I wanted to do this update because I know this information is out with the high school students. And we know as our community is always so excited about this event, and they might start be thinking ahead already to March. So I wanted board members to know that the date is now sometime in May so that if you are asked by community members. But I will run through board members real quickly in case they have any other direct questions about this for Dr. Hillman. Tom?
No, no questions.
Cory?
No questions.
Amy?
Pass.
Claudia?
No questions. Excited for it.
Jeff?
Amy, no questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Noel?
I respect the decisions that have been made, but I am reticent that we should go forward with it.
Yeah, there's quite a bit of time, Noel, between now and when it would happen. And so I, you know, I think that they are looking at that long view and trying to use the outdoors to the best of their ability. So I think that they are on the track to say, "This is exactly what we'd like to do, trying to do it as safe as we practically can."
My question, part of my question, though, refers to when do rehearsals start?
Yeah, the rehearsals would actually be almost all virtual. So you will see most of the work being done. And I can tell you, as a dad of a person who is in a Big Ten marching band, that they did all of, most of their training camp virtually, and you'd be surprised that it actually works fairly well. It's not as good as the real thing. But it is something that rehearsals can be done virtually, and it can still be pulled off.
Thank you for your response.
Okay, thank you, Noel. All right. So we can move on to future meetings. Our next meeting, Monday, January 25th, followed by Monday, February 8th, and then Monday, February 22nd. All of those meetings are at 7:00 PM. And we will make the determination about our January 25th meeting in terms of its format as we move closer to that date. But we are excited to say that our board meetings will take place at our new and amazing school meeting room at the District Services and District Office Building. So with that, I want to congratulate Cory and Claudia. Your first board meeting is in the books. So thank you. We were really impressed with the quality of your questions, and you really jumped in. And so we're so proud to have you and welcome you to the board. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
Moved by Noel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Claudia. Anita, if we could have a roll call vote for adjournment?
Braniac?
Aye.
Butler?
Aye.
Gerwitz?
Aye.
Gonzalez, George?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Stratmon?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you. We are adjourned. Motion carries.